Okay, we're gonna get started in about one minute.
Okay, we acknowledge that we are on traditional lands of the Treaty Four Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta, Manitoba, and the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of city council and city administration may be attending the meeting today through video conferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through video conferencing of the following: Please ensure your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Some delegations may be attending the meeting today through teleconferencing to address city council on various items on the agenda. Okay, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Notice of motion MN twenty-five dash fourteen: Smart Investment for a Sustainable Regina will be noted in the meeting minutes as read into the record at approval of agenda, and will be debated by council at its next meeting on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments: To add delegation DE twenty-five dash one-six-four Terry Sliva to the registered disc list of delegations for item CR twenty-five dash one-oh-two encampment response protocols, and to add the registered list of delegations. Councilor Manzanelli and Secundar, Councilor Zekidniak, thank you. I will call the question. Any opposed? And carried? Can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five city council meeting? Councilor Manzanelli and Secundar, Councilor Flores, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I will call the question. Any opposed? And carried? Now for the consent agenda. We will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. Item CR twenty-five dash one-zero-two encampment response protocols is deemed to be automatically removed from the consent agenda as a delegation or delegations have registered to speak to it, and will be considered by council in the agenda order at the call of the chair. Therefore, the consent agenda items for this meeting include the following items: CR twenty-five dash one-hundred Renewable Regina Two Thousand Fifty Update, and CR twenty-five dash one-zero-one Climate Adaptation Strategy. I will ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Fro and a Secundar, Councilor Zekidniak, any opposed? And carried? Okay, we will now move on to our first delegation, so I'd like to call upon delegation Mark Lier. Mark? So I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization representing, if any, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions that members may have for you. You can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. My name is Mark Lier, and I'm here representing the Cathedral Village Community Association regarding the proposed lease to build a storage shed in Les Sherman Park. This storage will greatly benefit the ongoing programs and activities of the CBCA. I would like to thank the city for your continued support of all the community associations across Regina that enables the dedicated volunteers to make our city a great place to live, no matter what my relatives in Saskatoon say. Please pass on our gratitude to Jamie Scott and Maria Cottsetas for their dedication to the communities they serve and their assistance in this matter, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you very much, Mark. Any questions from council colleagues? Looks like everything from last week stood. Thanks so much, Mark.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we will now consider item CR twenty-five dash one-oh... sorry, ninety-eight? CR twenty-five dash ninety-eight Cathedral Village Community Association Storage Lease, and I will ask councillor Turnbull to please introduce the report, except for she stepped out. Okay, I'll go to acting deputy mayor, councillor Rasovic.
Here we go.
Don't look so surprised.
I'm surprised.
Executive Committee considered this report. They support the recommendation from administration in the report.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Rasovic? Okay, can I have someone move the report, please? Councillor Fro and a Secundar, councillor Flores? Councillor Fro, would you like to speak to the report? Okay, do any council members have any questions on the report? Seeing none, councillor Fro, anything to close on? Okay, with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried. With those present voting, with all those present voting in favor, councillor Turnbull is temporarily away from the meeting.
Okay, we will now consider item CR twenty-five dash ninety-nine Appointments to Accessibility Advisory Committee and Regina Planning Commission, and I will ask councillor Rasovic if he could please introduce the report.
Executive Committee has considered this report, and they support the recommendation recommendation from administration in this report.
Okay, thank you. Can I have someone move the report? Councillor Zekidniak, thank you, and a Secundar, councillor Radins? Councillor Zekidniak, would you like to speak to the report? Okay, any questions from anybody on this report? Okay, seeing none, councillor Zekidniak, still good? Very good. With that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried unanimously with all members present voting in favor. Councillor Turnbull is still temporarily away from the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go to delegations related to CR twenty-five dash one-oh-two encampment response protocols. I'd like to call upon delegation DE twenty-five dash one-five-one, Florence Stratton. Afternoon, Florence. I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, today, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you can answer any questions we have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Florence Stratton, I'm representing myself. I find the encampment response protocols very confusing, and if I've read it correctly, it is also very disappointing. It starts off by saying, quote, "This report summarizes the current local challenges with respect to homelessness and encampments, other municipal approaches to response to encampments, and the current encampment response process that is followed in the city." Then on page five, it appears to endorse the current encampment response when it states, quote, "The current practice is designed to balance the needs of all stakeholders, including the people living in encampments and the broader community. This approach prioritizes the dignity, safety, and well-being of all individuals living in encampments while maintaining compliance with city regulations. No, the current encampment response is to take down encampments, which definitely does not prioritize the dignity, safety, and well-being of all individuals living in encampments. Rather, it puts the lives of unhoused people in further danger." To add to the confusion, right at the beginning, the report references the federal housing advocate Marie Jose Hula's review of homeless encampments, even quoting some of Hula's calls to action: "Act immediately to save lives, end forced evictions of encampments, respect the inherent rights of indigenous people, respect and uphold human rights." The rest of the report mainly ignores Hula's excellent recommendations. The report ends with a section titled "Close and Coordinate," which starts with reasons for having to decommission an encampment. These, according to the report, include: contravention of city bylaws on public property, imminent risk of fire, elevated risk to public safety, ongoing illegal activity. Regarding the first, contravention of city bylaws on public property, according to Hula, municipal governments must, quote, "repeal bylaws and other regulations which prohibit encampment residents from using public spaces." Regarding the second reason, imminent risk of fire, according to Hula, the risk of fire is often cited as a reason to forcibly remove encampments. Indeed, as many of us will recall, with grief and anger, fire was the excuse the city gave for the destruction of the encampment that stood in front of City Hall for six weeks in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. Regarding the third reason, elevated risk to public safety, unhoused people are members of the public. It is their safety, indeed their lives, that are at risk. Every year, a memorial hosted by Phoenix Residential is held to remember those who died in Regina in the previous year because they were unhoused. At last year's event, a hundred and eighteen names were read out. At last year's event, 118 names were read out. Regarding the fourth reason, ongoing illegal activity, any Canadian city or province that allows some of its citizens to be unhoused is itself operating in an illegal faction, fashion, as houselessness violates the Canadian Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms. Throughout the report, frequent references made to the Regina Street Team as part of the solution. On August 24, I carried out an informal survey at Sunday Fund Day, asking folks what they thought of the street team. Out of the approximately 15 people I surveyed, one said they appreciated the food provided by the team. Everyone else said the team was a waste of time and/or money. Perhaps the city might consider spending the money it currently spends on the street team on providing social housing. The motion on encampments that passed unanimously at executive committee recommends that the matter be referred back to administration to report back to the executive committee at its November 12 meeting. November 12? Why the delay? The matter first came before city council at its March 26 meeting. That's already five months ago. Please no more delays, and in the meantime, please commit to not taking down any encampments unless all residents have been provided with permanent, adequate, appropriate housing. Like all city of Regina meetings, this meeting began with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge we are on traditional lands of Treaty Four territory. As the Encampment Response Protocols report states, the city also acknowledges the extreme overrepresentation of indigenous people who experience houselessness in Regina. The actual figure is 75%. If council is not going to first vote to support encampments and then do everything in its power to end houselessness in Regina, then perhaps it should cease starting its meetings with a land acknowledgement. The hypocrisy is glaring. Thank you.
Thank you Florence. I see a question from councillor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today. Were you aware that, so last week at the executive committee meeting, there was a commitment made for, yes, for their engagement to improve the plan, and, but with folks who are unhoused and also grassroots organizations and community members working with those folks? Were you aware of that commitment that was made last week?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and also, were you aware, probably not, because I just learned this, that if you are interested in being a part of that, you can contact Service Regina and indicate so, and then would be invited to those stakeholder meetings moving forward?
So I should contact Service Regina?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, Florence, thanks for coming today. You can return to the gallery. Okay, just checking one more time, Mandala, if you're here. Okay, we'll go to delegation D-25-154 Rebecca Granovski Larson. Okay, once you're settled, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, which city or town you reside in, you'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions council members may have for you, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Granovski Larson. I just got in here, so I don't have my thing in front of me. I think you already had a chance probably to look over my delegation, so I'm not going to repeat it. But yeah, basically, I want to reiterate what a lot of the community members have been saying about the need for community consultation and for the people that are most affected by these, by encampment policies to be the, in the driving seat of determining the policy. So I guess the main, the main things that we would like to really see is to ensure that people are going to where people are at across the city and talking to them about how, how the current policy of evicting people is, is, is affecting them, like the, because it's, it's always a very traumatizing process whenever like encampments come down and people are continually not being able to stay anywhere in the city and not having a response from the people who are taking down the encampments, don't know where to send people, and it like, I think we all know it's a very unsustainable system as it is. I think if we want to be serious about reconciliation and implementing the Truth and Reconciliation Report, that we really have to take seriously not dislocating people in this city from their land when we have a 75% of the people that are living in the streets are of indigenous ancestry, and I, I think we have to have some like very serious conversations around those issues. I think we need to talk about, they need to decriminalize this entire process, that they, that people should be able to exist in this city if they don't have homes, and they can't always be fearing harassment for things that you and I don't fear harassment for, um, from doing basic things like needing to be able to sleep at night, needing to be able to use a bathroom, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see if any of my colleagues have questions. Councillor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Just checking, because I'm not sure if you heard this piece, but the question of, like, are you aware that you will have the ability to give your feedback in the process if you connect through Service Regina and indicate you're interested and be, as an interested stakeholder in continuing to provide your feedback as they're working on improving the encampment response?
Definitely, and like, we definitely, yeah, we do appreciate that the city, I think, has really wanted to connect with people, and we really appreciate that opportunity, and we are encouraged to see that. I think there has been a real desire to work with community members on this, but with the people affected, and also to look at other jurisdictions of stuff that has really come a long way in terms of like, everybody is dealing with this housing crisis at different, in different ways, and a lot is being front-ended onto cities, but like, we do need to figure out ways to work together to have a less traumatizing process, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Fro, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. I know you've done a lot of work on this file and a lot of advocacy. It's clear to me we're addressing the symptom of the problem and very little of the upstream solutions, but when you spoke about earlier sort of the role of the cities and the downloading responsibility to the cities, I'm certainly on a, a learning journey myself as it relates to this file. Can you talk about from your perspective is what you see as the role of the city in relation to the provincial and federal government as it relates to the root cause of houselessness, but in this case, what we're largely talking about is harm reduction. I'm interested in your perspective as to what you see as the role of the city versus constitutionally, but also resource-wise, what we see as the role of the provincial and federal government?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of areas we could actually push on this. I, I think, like, one, one campaign we are working on is rent control, and, and that is a huge thing, having people not knowing if their rent's going to go up like $200 in a year and getting evicted because there's literally no way for people to like be able to stay in their homes when there is absolutely no regulation around that, like, we're kind of came with a payment like that. Historically, city council actually did, there was a, a motion to city councils to encourage rent control across the province, which actually would have like a big step in like people not getting evicted, is not having outrageous rents that are like completely beyond a lot of people's means. I think there's a lot of different things that we could do, like, there's, there's a lot of different programs, obviously, there's the federal programs, the provincial programs that we, we obviously all need to demand more money, more funding, more support, also the financialization of social housing has had like a huge impact on the affordability, like, we just need more, we need more community housing, and we need to work very hard on pressing for that, on working for that, and for like, when the, honestly, when the other levels of government are not willing to do that, I think there is a lot we could actually do to do it ourselves or push on those files and work with community to like, make sure that those concerns are front and center and that, yeah, that we're, that we are working together, and also, also not forgetting also the people, like, there are so many people in domestic violence situations that are like couch surfing or staying with relatives, but they are not counted in like the number of people that are like sleeping in the streets every night, so they're lost in the point in time counts, like, I think the numbers are actually much higher than we're officially recording, and so like, we really have to work hard on demanding that women who don't have a place to go and when they're, and their families, when they are being beaten, and they literally cannot move, leave their partners, like, we're leading the country on the worst rates of domestic violence, like, there are so many issues that like are catastrophically worse than they have to be, because there has been a failure of like having adequate services in place, and there were so many things we could do on all of these files.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you councillor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Through the chair, looking at the, the ask of, of, looking at different jurisdictions across Canada for better and other options to what we're currently doing, what are your thoughts on that, and do you, have you seen other approaches to this that you find are better suited to, to deal with this issue than what we're doing?
I, I think like the criminal, like the criminalization of unhoused people, I think, is a very big issue, like, the, the amount that they are, like, the amount that people are day-to-day stressed out about being harassed, basically for existing, like, there are so many things that people in houses take for granted that like, like, if I got evicted from my home and I took stuff like a knife, and a cop pulled me over, they'd say, they could say, "That's a weapon that you were going to use for like a violent end," something like that. If I have knives in my house, I'm not going to be criminalized for that. The same with like, using alcohol could be criminalized if you're in the street, not if you're, so there's some, some things are like bylaw enforcement issues, some things around encampments, like, I, there have been a lot of moves, in Halifax, they actually have 10 encampment sites, same in Hamilton, I believe, recently, it would be interesting to look at other jurisdictions. And another possibility, like Taylor Field, I think we have to talk, have serious conversations about where the funding is going for, that has been on the table for so long, so it wouldn't even necessarily, it could be like different places in the, in the city, but it also could be like things that we haven't explored yet, that I think we should be taking more seriously, that we have historically promised to fund and never found the funding for because it has not been a political priority, or it's been pushed to the side because other things have come out.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for coming today. You can return to the gallery.
Thanks.
Yeah, I got, I got notice. So yeah, I'll call up delegation D-25-152 Mandala Mathembu. And then, once you are seated, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, which city or town you reside in, you'll have five minutes to address council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions that council members may have for you, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yeah, sorry, my voice is a little shot. My name's Mandala Mathembu, not representing anyone, just, just myself today and my community, and I'm a resident, resident of Regina and the heritage community area of the city. Yeah, I kind of wanted to just mention a couple of things that were on my mind just around this encampment policy, talking with people in my community, talking with people I've been working with, and the three things that came up a lot for me and just came up for a lot of the people I was talking to. One was big on transparency. We've been hearing a lot of dialogue around the encampment protocol, we've seen some of the files on it, but a lot of people are just confused as to like what actually the data is, hearing the street team speak at the lunch and learn and some of the meetings that we've been a part of and stuff, and talking with the city in some other meetings. There's talk of working with a lot of different agencies, the kind of intricate processes that go into making sure encampments are safe, the services that are being provided, but with like, kind of some simple questions that people are presenting or talking about it, there wasn't a lot of concrete answers that an advocate or someone in the community that cares, like me, can actually draw from to understand what is happening at the city level, to treat encampments, to treat people in encampments, to make sure that they're safe, to make sure that there's, you know, good outcomes for people in encampments, if they're going to be dismantled, if they're going to be taken down, what does the road look like for people? I've been at multiple encampment dismantlings in my community and at city hall here, and I was not impressed and was very disgusted by the lack of compassion, the lack of humanity, and the lack of actual like successful outcomes that were like trying to be attained for the people that were being forced to leave, or being criminalized and being arrested and being moved out of their thing, their space they were living at for some time, and watching their belongings be thrown out, torn apart, taken and picked up and seized and things like that. So I think, yeah, transparency, when we're talking about encampments and handling them, I think often there's a detachment from people that don't stay in encampments, that they're just kind of like almost a political issue, we're part of the city or whatever, but it's the same, I've heard a lot of people that housed and unhoused compared to, if you went into one of our neighborhoods that we have people we care about, say it's Cathedral, and you just break down a house in Cathedral and tell someone to leave, and you don't offer them services, you don't offer them ways to get back, it's a really, really traumatic event, and I think the humanity of the situation and the lack of humanity of these situations, we're not talking about it happens once and every once in a while, the city protocol, the city strategy, from what I understand, is, that is how you guys handle encampments, is when it comes to a point that you either crosses bylaws or crosses the boundaries that agreed upon, or the agreement from the private property owner, they're dismantled, and there isn't, from what I've understood, actual secure, housing secured for those people that are houseless and that are being forced to leave. So that's just an easy one, I think, just as far as transparency, people need to understand what that looks like when the street team or its community wellness, committee and stuff talk about, things like working with different agencies, talk about outcomes for people and what those outcomes are looking like, when they're talking about what municipalities people are looking into and what they're implementing. The public, people that are, I mean, I feel like I should know what's going on, hopefully, like, if I'm looking into it, I'm involved in some of these meetings and stuff, I should be able to leave those meetings with understanding of what that policy looks like, and way beyond me, the people that are having their housing, their shelters, their belongings dismantled and having their own personal lives really, really, really like affected and often like in traumatizing fashion, they should understand what this policy looks like, how they can protect themselves, how can they, how they can protect the people they love and stuff like that. So I think that transparency and that's important. Also, on that note, I'm talking about the people living in encampments, I think too often we're in spaces like this where a bunch of people that don't have lived experience or don't really have an attachment to those in the streets or don't have an attachment of their own, kind of like living in those situations, are making decisions on behalf of people and prescribing what is better for them or what doesn't work or what isn't feasible. I think we have to include people that are living on the streets or living in encampments or living on the, kind of like the edges, the margins of society to be a part of these conversations, to lead these conversations, so when we're making policy that affects people, it should reflect the vision that people on the streets have, have to say in their vision. Some of the one event we held recently in front of city hall here to have people talk, people talked about being, feeling that they were treated like garbage, feeling that they were discarded and that they didn't matter, they felt like the policy in place, they think that the city of Regina and the residents here and the government care more about aquatic centers and local festivals and things like that than providing actual services and housing and compassion for those that are suffering on the streets. So bottom line, if we're going to have these conversations, it can't continue to persist without people on the streets and people that are living in encampments helping to contribute to what that policy looks like. And then lastly, I just think urgency, 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 when we talk about declaring a state of emergency on houselessness or on our drug addictions or on our state of, state of our streets in our neighborhoods, we have to treat it like an emergency. Being pushed off to November is not new for anyone that's paid attention to this issue. I'm, haven't lived in Regina my whole life, but in the brief time I have, I've been to a lot of city council meetings and heard a lot of news that talks about big things happening, big things being included in budgets, new, new information being handled, new councillors on the case, new committees being formed to handle this, new street teams, new whatever, and year after year, month after month, we watch it get passed along the road, and our entire cities suffer, our communities suffer, our government has to continue having these conversations without actually being able to put forward policy that means we can move forward as a city alongside our neighbors rather than have to talk about it every three months about introducing new stuff. So we have to treat this urgently, and also, just real quickly, because I'm not sure what my time's like, but just.
About 30 seconds.
Yeah, winter's here, so it's, it's August, we are going to blink and it's going to be a totally different ecosystem, a totally different beast that people on the streets are facing. So if we're going to talk about this as an emergency now in August and the challenges we're facing now, in two months from now, it's going to be totally different, and we're going to be talking about warming centers and shelter from the, the cold and things like that, so we have to act now, we have to act fast, and come November, we're going to be handling a totally different kind of beast in this city, so we need to keep, keep mind of that.
Awesome, thank you. I'll check to see if my colleagues have any questions for you. I'll check to see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Okay, seeing none, thank you for your presentation today. You can return to the gallery. Okay, I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-155, Cale McClellan, and they are online. So I'll check, Cale, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Cale. I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, which city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions members of council may have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, hi, my name is Cale. I live in the city of Regina and I'm representing myself. So Regina's current response to homelessness and the rise of tent communities or encampments has demonstrated a troubling and cowed prioritization of optics and enforcement over compassion, safety and human rights. The city's decision to repeatedly evict unhoused people from tent communities without adequate transitional housing or support in place has exacerbated, exacerbated the trauma and displacement that is so quintessentially Saskatchewan. The city must commit to engaging meaningfully with people with lived experience. For too long, the city's relied on short term enforcement measures that criminalize poverty and push vulnerable populations further into crisis. What we are currently doing is inhumane. Sending out bylaw and police to evict people from parks or empty lots is insane. Repeating this process a few days or even a few hours later is equally insane. We are wasting so much money sending out bylaw and police when we already know there's nowhere else for them to go. When we chase unhoused people from public parks to private lots, not only are we abdicating our responsibility to our community members, we are placing undue hardship on the people who own the lots, especially since bylaw routinely goes out to these private lots to inspect encampments and threatens the owners of fines if they don't clean up the lot. I know it's easy to shift blame and cost onto property owners, but doing so is unfair and creates hostility within the community. This approach is not only ineffective but deeply harmful. If we decide to remain committed to allowing some of our population to live in tents outside when it's minus 50 or plus 38, I urge you to listen to the residents living there. I urge you to listen to the people on the ground doing the work to support tent communities rather than the people who are uncomfortable with seeing people living in tents. Consultation is important, but not more important than other people's human rights. And we must balance both of those when we make decisions on the encampment policy. People need housing and some will need more intensive supports. People need, also need access to basic things like running water, electricity and toilets. People need access to food and water and people need to have the basic human dignity recognized and realized by offering support. We can and should support tent communities, porta potties, hand washing stations and lighting. We can and should be offering 24 hours to support for folks living in these communities, not in the form of police or security guards, and I hesitate to even suggest social workers, but there needs to be on the ground, peer led support so folks aren't overdosing and dying in porta potties and tents. Everything we as housing individuals enjoy should be offered to unhoused individuals. We can play hot potato with the provincial and federal governments when it comes to jurisdiction over housing, but that will only prolong the suffering and death we see on our streets. The mental health and addiction crisis will only continue to worsen. And as many of us know, the longer folks are houseless, the harder it is for them to stabilize once they return to housing. As an indigenous woman and mother, I often think about the future generations and what we are leaving for them. I worry that our children will grow up to believe that tent communities are a normal thing. What we should be showing our children is that we live in a community that deeply cares about one another, that because we live in a city and country that is so rich, we take care of those with less than us. The city that we all love so much deserves so much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Cale. I'll check with my colleagues if there's any questions for you. Okay, seeing none, thank you for your presentation today. You can sign off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-156, Angelica Barth. Okay, once you're settled, I'll get you to do the same, introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, which city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions council have for you. Go ahead whenever you are ready.
Angelica Barth, and I informally represent three or four residents in this city who have experienced encampments beside or near their homes, including myself. So have you ever lived beside an encampment? I have, and several people I have summarized their stories below have also. If you have not lived beside an encampment, you need to do so before you support encampments. If you support encampments, you are agreeing for yourself and your neighbors, the need to have someone in your household home at all times to watch for a sure risk to your home due to open fires, open drug use, drug making and associated non-civil and sometimes by the criminal code, criminal behavior. Breaking off of fence posts to make this fire, fence jumping into your own yard, theft, excessive noise, particularly at night, fighting among encampers, thus nights of being awoken in the middle of the night when you need to call the police for the safety of themselves, the encampers because they're fighting with each other. Vagrancy is increased, loitering, and the list of events goes on. All the, these, these and more have been cited and documented at the police and fire station where the emergency services were needed to be called for the safety of the encampers themselves, let alone the neighbors. Do you want these events near your home? Probably not, then encampments are not the answer. Encampments are not civil, sane, safe or sanitary for the encampers or for anybody. On any, as I work in the shelter system and have done so for over a decade, I can speak to this. On any night, any given night, shelters are fully registered, beds are full in name only on paper. But up to 30%, including in winter and, and the hottest part of summer, these shelters' beds go, these registered shelter beds go unused to someone unoccupied and unused at night. So 30% of beds are registered and tied to that person and they are not there to use it because they are in, at the encampment. I ask them, where are you? Where were you? At the encampment because my friends are there. Well, now a bed is gone registered and unused and someone else who truly needs the bed, who's homeless, hasn't got a bed. Shelter beds are not occupied because these registered individuals simply neglect to show up to the shelter. They have a place to sleep but fail to utilize the space and therefore someone else can't either. Many times because they prefer to stay in encampments with friends, friends that prefer to stay out of shelters because they are, there are rules. Yes, there are rules for the safety and sanity and sanctity of everybody. I have been told literally to my face that people don't go to shelters because there's rules, they'd rather go to the encampment. Well, we all have rules, we've all got to listen to rules. That's just the way world, the world works. Common sense rules of support to help these residents get their lives back on track. But many times as residents fail to use their bed, they fail also to appear to appointments to help residents get housing and get their lives back on track. Encampers need to take responsibility for their own lives and they help, take the help offered despite services not being perfect and despite housing not being perfect. Life is certainly not perfect for most of us, including renters. Price point, location, other factors, you've got to deal with it and take a bus to see family if that's what you need to do, if the housing isn't perfect. No to encampments anytime, anywhere, for any reason, public or private. Help is available through Housing First programs, counseling, detox and other services. They are there, they need to be utilized and they need to show up for appointments. And encampers cannot exist in the coldest part of winter without being at risk of, of encampers themselves dying. So whatever it is they solve the problem with in the middle of winter, they need to solve the problem any other time of year. Encampers and encampments should not exist. And they should not be permitted. Let's quit wasting emergency services, police, fire and so on, and paramedics on people who refuse services. They need to take services so that emergency services are not used and that money can be moved to more services of a positive sort.
Ten seconds left.
In, in housing, okay. No matter the religion, culture or color of anyone involved, housing needs to play and act, housing, we need to have housing for these people and they need to play a role in getting those services. No to encampments.
Okay, I see a question from Councilors Akinyak, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I do have a question for you. So you were talking about not wasting emergency services. So my question is, and you're saying no to encampments, but if we just tear them down and then they pop up somewhere else and then they get torn down again and the process just repeats itself, wouldn't that qualify as like a waste of services? So that's sort of what's happening now. The commitment is to make a better encampment strategy. Are you suggesting that what we're doing right now is working well?
No, we have encampments, so something's not working. And encampments need to come down for the safety of everybody, residents nearby and encampers. They're not safe either.
Right, so I mean, that is what's happening. They're being taken down and then they're popping up elsewhere and then being taken down.
I suggest they use the shelter space that is available until they can secure proper housing and then they can receive Housing First services to remain in the housing. The housing is there, the services are there, the shelter space and services are there. They need to be utilized and they need to take responsibility to show up to their appointments so they can get and maintain housing.
Okay, I understand your concerns in relation to housing as a provincial issue. I'm focused on our encampment strategy municipally. And so I think what you're saying then is that strategy of just tearing them down and then continuing to do that, like that's what we should be doing municipally, like within our.
Yes, because those people probably are, some of them, registered to shelters. They need to go there. Or they need to find the housing with their cousin, brother, sister, mother, aunt, whoever it is they claimed that they stayed the night with instead of being at the shelter. If you can spend the night at your aunt's, brother's, sister's, then stay there. Leave that bed shelter open for someone else.
I was just looking for clarity about our municipal rule and I think you're saying that it's working fine. Thank you.
Yes, take them down.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation today. Okay, I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-157, Murtha Rivera. Once you're settled there, I'll get you to do the same, to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, today, which city or town you reside in. You have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions. Go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. My name is Murtha Rivera. I could be representing many things, but I'm wearing my own hat today. So I'm gonna talk on my behalf and my experience. The houseless crisis is growing as we speak, we all know that, due to many factors. One, that housing is very expensive because the landlords keeping increasing the rent without explanation. The financial assistance being seized and said, don't provide enough to pay rent, pay utilities, buy food and medication and all the other needs. Many individuals are evicted or unable to keep their right to have a house because of these factors. The people who are now on the street find themselves not safe and living where they can rest or sleep because of the constant dangers of being assaulted. The women I talked to have been or fear of being sexually assaulted. How is that life? I believe that we have failed as a society having human rights respected. There are also seniors living on the streets now. If I have to live like that, I don't know how I could do it considering my mobility issues, my need for rest and warmth when the weather is cold, not having a bed or a safe place to relax, or adequate food or the things I love, including my pets. This crisis only affects the people, this crisis not only affects people on assistance, it also affects workers who are not paying a decent wage. Living in their vehicles is something that is the only alternative for them. Everything I mentioned is very traumatic and unacceptable. Shelters are not the solution, really. Neither are encampments. People without stable housing need support, so they form relationships and look after each other. This community could start looking at getting the services they need and finding a permanent place to call home. An encampment will give a temporary respite, providing the supports when needed. It's very traumatic when an encampment is dismantled by force. The people living in tents are detained if, quote mark, they resist to leave, according to the police. And their belongings are destroyed and thrown in the garbage. I don't think that any of us who live in a home and without worrying about basic necessities expect the unhoused to behave normally under the unacceptable circumstances they are forced to survive in. And I say survive because that's not a way of living. For all this reason, they are very vulnerable if their health and mental health has yet been affected, they will start getting worse. They need support and stability just as you and I need. The unhoused need safety, no more policing. They are not a threat to society. They are the result of neglect and disrespect from a society that values money and comfort for a privileged few. We lost life, 118 last year. We can afford to lose another one. We need to aim at not losing another life. We need to focus on people, not profit. Funding should be directed to save the lives of those whose need are not being met. We should feel uncomfortable as long as we are not living up to our responsibility to respect human rights and show them privilege that they matter. Circumstances as a chance of life and a connection sometimes save this life. Please don't forget that people don't have a value in money. Their lives matter more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll check and see if any of my colleagues have questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for your presentation today. You can return to the gallery. Okay, next I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-158, Corinne Harper. Corinne Harper? Okay, we'll go to delegation DE 25-164, Teri Sliva. Hi, Teri. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mayor Bashinsky.
So once you're set up, I'll get you to do the same, just to introduce yourself, the organization you're representing, if any, today. What city or town you reside in, and you'll have five minutes to address council, after which you can respond to any questions. So whenever you're ready, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bashinsky. Regina City Council and Administration. I'm Teri Sliva. I live in Regina and I'm representing myself. In light of the recent Regina encampment removals concerned citizens, including myself, urge the city to adopt a humane policy that respects the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms by not dismantling encampments until all residents have permanent adequate housing. The thought of having nowhere to call home, which is what people living on the street have to deal with every day, should not be exacerbated or tolerated. In Regina, the city should provide essential supports, washrooms, potable water, garbage collection, and transit access, while repealing laws that criminalize houselessness. When people live in survival mode only, it's difficult to find ways out of the situation. All residents should deserve a quality of life, not just the haves, ignoring the have-nots. To address the root causes, we need to call for $10 million annually for affordable housing, immediate use of vacant Saskatchewan housing units, increased provincial income assistance above the poverty line, and federal reinstatement of the National Affordable Housing Program. This approach prioritizes dignity, safety, and lasting solutions over displacement. You will think that it costs too much money from the city, from the city coffers to remedy this, but think about the health costs, the shelter costs, policing costs, and incarceration costs. Yes, the provincial and federal governments should be looking after this, which they aren't doing adequately. But we should, the city should be advocating more firmly in this area. So who pays for policing and shelter if not the municipality? Shouldn't there be fundamental justice for houseless people who are not criminals but are forced into a life of crime to survive without the necessary supports? The Regina residents will end up being potentially affected by these crimes. Please be proactive in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Councilor Zakiniak has a question for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Teri. You spoke, you mentioned the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Can you, I don't know if you have this off the top of your head, but if you're able to, could you speak more to some of our obligations as a municipality under that document? You had mentioned that we have certain obligations that we should be fulfilling. Can you maybe speak to that a little bit more?
Well, we just need people that actually help people.
Right.
Rather than ignore them.
And am I right that you said like we do have obligations under this charter for all of our community members, including unhoused community members? I think that was the point you were making. Is that correct?
That's it. Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for presenting today, Teri.
Thank you.
You can return to the gallery. Okay, we have communications on item CR 25-102. Can I have a motion to receive and file communications? CP 25-125 Evelyn Tisher, CP 25-135 Tyro Mtembu, and CP 25-136 Corinne Harper. Counselor Turnbull, thank you. And seconder, Councilor Zakiniak. I'll call the question. Any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider item CR 25-102, encampment response protocols, and I will ask Counselor Turnbull to please introduce the report.
Okay, so the history is on August 20, 2025, Executive Committee considered the attached report EX 2569, Encampment Response Protocols, from the City Planning and Community Services Division. The committee adopted a resolution that city council refer this back to administration and research and report back to the executive committee at its November 12, 2025 meeting with options for an improved encampment response strategy and include information on the following. A review of best practices from other Canadian municipalities include but not limited to the recommended locations for designated encampment sites, operational models, and community partners, estimated capital and operating costs, and required bylaw amendments and proposed community engagement plan. And remove item MN 256, Houselessness Crisis, from the list of outstanding items.
Thank you, Counselor Turnbull. Okay, can I have someone move the report? Counselor Flores, I'll give you the mic here. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, before I move concurrently with the recommendation to, made from Executive Committee to refer this back to administration, I just want to thank all the delegations that joined us today and thank you for sharing everything that you've shared with us. And I want to advise that because this motion is asking administration to come back to us and report with additional information, this becomes a referral motion requesting all the things that were outlined earlier. Members of council will not be able to debate this at today's meeting. However, this will be debated at our meeting in November. And at that time, members of public will also have the opportunity to address council on the matter and the report that administration brings back to us. This is a very important issue. I think this is something that requires meaningful action and my hope is that we can get there. I see a lot of passion from community, both for those who are impacted and support those members and those who have concerns as well. I think that's really important information that we need to take in and provide appropriate feedback. So I really want to acknowledge those delegations that addressed us today and thank you for your passion and the community passion is really palpable and please know that we've heard you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. So as indicated, with a referral, it will go straight to vote, but I do need a seconder for that. Counselor Mantenelli? Okay, and with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote on this referral motion.
Through you, Mayor, the referral motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to delegations related to MN 25-12, Municipal Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve. So I would like to call upon delegation DE 25-159, Dale Yurdis. Good afternoon. So I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, which city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions council members have for you. Go ahead whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Your Worship, and appreciate this opportunity to speak on support of the concept of the biodiversity reserve. My name's Dale Yurdis and I'm speaking on behalf of Nature Regina, a nonprofit that was founded in the city in 1933, so we're starting to get a bit of a track record. And I do live in Regina over in Hillsdale. Nature Regina strongly supports Counselor Fro's motion to establish the Crocus Prairie Biodiversity Reserve. I'll note that our members have been actively working to document species at this site. It's, as you all know, a former golf course and now an ecological recovery. So far, we've identified more than 100 plant species as well as various insects, birds, and mammals. And one of the interesting things, wildflowers that are rare in the city like Perry Crocus and moss flocks, so far as I know, I haven't found them anywhere else in the city, are found blooming there each spring, so it's a unique opportunity. We'll note that Nature Regina has been involved in designating and working with you and the city to have Regina designated as a bird-friendly city and that one of the most important things in a bird-friendly city is having habitat for birds. So from the perspective of bird-friendly city, this idea of creating, of setting aside a naturalized area in the park system or adding to the park system a naturalized area is extremely positive. I note though the site is disturbed, it does include along the creek patches of native prairie that are somewhat degraded but are, you know, as I said, species are still there and it continues to regenerate with stewardship. Because we're on the Regina Plains, and as I think you all know, when you go outside Regina, you don't see much native prairie left. In fact, less than 1% of the native prairie on the Regina Plains remains. So even tiny remnants like this along the creek are ecologically quite important for, though we have, you know, plants or else in the prairie, you tend to get, let's call them varieties, eco-types that are best adapted to the Regina Plains and they'll be surviving here and perhaps nowhere else. So these little islands are really important and so we strongly support it. We'll note that prairie is central to our region's identity. We think ourselves as prairie people living here in southern Saskatchewan. And having a site like this, it's neat, you can ride the city bus, get off at the bus stop by the curling rink and go walk across grassland. It's an accessible chance to get out, see nature, and experience a little bit the concept of walking through a grassland and some of, you know, what our heritage was like, what it was like when my grandparents came out here to start farming many decades ago. It's also a chance more formally for students and teachers to learn and explore beyond the straight education aspect. There is lots of good scientific research showing the wellness benefits of getting out in nature. Doesn't matter if you're in a forest, in a grassland, walking through a marsh, there are physical and mental wellbeing is enhanced. That's very well established. So by setting aside this area, we'll be creating an excellent opportunity for people to be able to go and walk in an area that's healthy recreation, but also very healthy for mental and physical health. We would support, you know, we, our vision for this area is rejuvenation, limited development, some walking trails, some interpretive type information developed over time. So it's an affordable area where you can go for, you know, walking is a good form of recreation and to become more aware of our, of our natural and cultural heritage. Since the motion, I believe, mentions Nature Regina as collaborating with the city, I should mention that we are supportive of that and would look forward to working with the city in contributing what knowledge we have toward management of the site. You know, one of our experiences, including creating the native prairie garden and managing it at the Royal Saskatchewan Museum, which thousands of people look at each year to see native plants. We've been propagating plants there, making them available, and encouraging people to grow native plants in their backyards and so on, so we have some knowledge that we hope can be helpful here. I just acknowledge the administration's notes that there are utility corridors that will have some impact on this site.
Fifteen seconds left.
And, and we accept that limitation on the site. And finally, I'll just recognize the importance of indigenous knowledge and we would support seeking respectful guidance and collaboration with indigenous elders and knowledge keepers as management of the site develops. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I see Counselor Fro, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Thanks for your presentation, Dale. And I've been out for the spring crocus walk. It's pretty cool, notwithstanding sometimes the chilly temperatures. One of the things I've learned in conversations with you is, aside from the connection to our past, which is important, the usage of natural grass as a naturalized space in terms of how it might sort of benefit our community in terms of carbon sequestration or using less water if we incorporate in our park spaces. I wonder if you can maybe speak for those of us that aren't experts like you of actually the benefit of not just protecting grasslands, but of trying to incorporate more natural grasses into our park and urban spaces as a city. What might some of those benefits be?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor, and certainly I'm not an expert in park management, but you mentioned carbon sequestration, less water, and I really want to emphasize the biodiversity benefits. For every native plant, you probably have several, you know, bees. It's, my wife and I grow a lot of native plants. I think I'm up to 14 species of bees I've documented in my backyard. And they're there because different bees need, you know, different species. They're adapted to native species. Many of the more ornamental cultivated ones don't actually work very well for bees. So the more we, the more we make the plant base in the city park system ecologically rich, the more the rest of the ecological system, the more butterflies we're going to have, the more bees we're going to have, generally a healthier the soil is going to be. And going back to what I said about health benefits, that richer environment to walk through, more interesting things to see, is also a healthier, more relaxing, richer environment to walk with and that is, is better, beneficial to our wellbeing, at least. I'm not an expert, but it is an area I read in and that's what I read in the literature about it. So quite a lot... So quite a lot of benefits, and I saw in the Park Master Plan, the move toward more naturalization, and I guess this is part of it, but our society is very supportive of that direction in the Park Master Plan.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you, Councilor Rassvich. Go ahead.
Through the chair. I drive by there, I go to the dog park, I guess, which is across the way.
Right.
So that area there, from your knowledge, does it, it gets flooded in the spring? If the water levels get to a certain level, right?
Right. At my understanding, I haven't actually checked the flood maps, but my understanding is the whole area we're talking about would be within the range of a 1 in 500 flood, so, so development would be restricted there because of the flood risk. The biggest flood I've personally seen certainly had the whole dog park underwater, but I don't think the, most of the higher because there's quite a rise on the other side of the creek, as you know, because you're using the dog park.
I'm trying to recall that myself, if I'm asking.
I'm thinking most of that, I think some of the lower areas were underwater, but the majority of land we're talking about stayed dry that year. That was either 2011 or 2013, I can't remember. We had quite a large amount of water going down Wascana Creek. And, but it is, yes, it is all potentially flooded by the vegetation there. Well, both by observation and the vegetation tells me it doesn't flood very often, because you have dryland-type species up in the higher creek bank and so on.
Okay, no, I was just kind of wondering why, because it is a golf course, and then it's sort of been sitting there vacant.
Right.
And I'm wondering, is it because maybe there is, you know, flooding issues possibly? I was just kind of wondering why it hasn't been used, I guess, for anything else.
Yeah, and while I don't know the whole history, I would say that it has got restriction to development because of flooding, so that would probably have prevented anyone from coming to city and saying, hey, can we build housing on you or something, because?
I guess my other question, B, is, you know, I guess Nature Regina, I guess there's other organizations, and you were talking about pathways and some educational, you know, facilities, or something around what would just wondering, because then I started wondering, what's the cost to the city? Wondering if your organizations would be willing to participate and help fundraise, to put some of these things in place? Just kind of wondering.
Right, and partial answer to that is, you know, we have discussed it at Nature Regina Board. We are willing to participate. We have offered to do some fundraising. Now, our entire budget for the year is about three seconds of spending for the city, so it's you know, I don't even have a sense of what it costs. But my vision is, you know, this isn't like the regular park where you spend large sums of money developing it initially. One can go slowly and work on, on, you know, I favor just mode paths because they're more natural and low cost to put in, and that isn't a big cost off the top. I, I hope there'll be an opportunity to work on actively supporting, you know, rehabilitation, getting more plants into more disturbed areas. But that's the thing, one can work on slowly, learn as one's going, instead of trying to do the whole 50 acres in one expensive go, and it fails. And so I, I don't managing any area has some costs, but I don't see this being a high-cost park for the city at all.
I guess my other, my last question is, I guess right now, because every time I go by there, it's vacant. Like, you never almost, you barely see people going through there.
Right.
Right? But I'm just wondering, you know, once it becomes kind of out there, you know, as a place to go, maybe? You know, I guess you probably want to limit traffic, and some traffic going through, just trouncing through there. Right? Wouldn't you think? Or no?
Good, good question. My experience is most people like to stay on trails. And aren't as keen as I am to wander off through the tall grass where the ticks are and stuff like that. Not sure, I assume one could find a tick there, because you can find them anywhere else there's tall grass, but anyway. So, yeah, that maybe, as it develops and gets better known, an eventual issue. My, my own thought is initially, the whole area won't get trampled. People will mostly walk down a couple of paths that will get put there, and that's the kind of use it will take. But you're right, if it becomes more popular, that maybe it may take some more active effort at some point in the future, but that would be success.
And I like your idea, actually, a cut path. I actually like that, instead of putting asphalt.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Putting asphalt disturbs the area more and
I agree.
And, you know, mowing, you can always reroute the path a bit if you find something more interesting next year.
That's a great idea. I never thought of that, like a cut path. It just totally makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation today, Mr. Jurdis. You can return to the gallery.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-160 Trevor Harriet. Afternoon. Once you're settled, I will get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you will have the chance to answer any questions we have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Trevor Harriet. I'm representing Public Pastures, Public Interest, and I live in the city of Regina. I'm pleased to have this chance to make this submission on behalf of Public Pastures, Public Interest. We are a provincial grassland advocacy group. We work in collaboration with other community organizations, some of whom are represented here today, to help ranchers, municipalities, and governments protect the province's most endangered habitats. Its grasslands, perennial grassland and native grassland in particular, provides carbon sequestration, climate mitigation, and crucial habitat, but it continues to be converted to annual crops and other forms of development, rural and urban. I'd like to try to answer a couple of questions that came up earlier before I go on, because I think those are really important questions. One of them, from David, Counselor David Fro, reminds me that grassland is important for things like climate resiliency. These grasses and the forbs and flowers that have been growing with them have been here for thousands of years. 10,000 years. There's a good reason for that. They're resilient. They know what they're doing. They can tough it out with flood, with drought. And in terms of us trampling, you know, grassland, it's not an issue, because they evolved with bison, right? So they've, they can, they can take a fair bit of foot traffic. But I agree, as Dale said, people will probably stick to the mode trails, and that's about all we're planning. And that reminds me of one of the other questions, which was, you know, what kind of costs there could be here? And there may be some, but we have, through our organizations, Public Pastures, Public Interest, but especially Nature Regina, we have the capacity to partner with the city to get access to grants from charities and foundations, Nature Canada, the Weston Foundation, there are many of them that are looking for places to put money into urban areas that want to use climate-friendly, nature-based solutions in a time of climate change. So that money is out there. We should be able to help you get some of that, if there's any costs that come forward. Okay, so the loss of grassland is happening all across the Great Plains, right? So we see in other cities, Chicago, from Chicago to Winnipeg, Saskatoon, and Calgary, taking measures to retain and restore small remnants of the prairie world that once stretched across the belly of this continent. Retention of even the smallest of remnants, as Dale was saying, is a crucial step that the city of Regina can take simply by passing this motion. The McKell Wascana Conservation Area, conserved by the city with the assistance of Ducks Unlimited Canada, was an important contribution, and we should be congratulated for that. There are grassland birds nesting there, bobolinks that don't exist elsewhere in the city. The grass is mostly non-native there, but still, it provides climate change values because it's perennial grass holding the soil down through drought or flood, and it provides habitat for some wild insects, mammals, and birds. The remnant of grassland at the site of the former Craig Golf Course, described in today's motion, is similar to McKell, but it features more plant diversity, making it more important as a biodiversity site in the city. As grassland advocates, we often hear from members of the public telling us that they have not seen a crocus since they were living back on the farm many, many years ago. There are good reasons for that, and the crocuses they're remembering might well have been plowed under by now. But here in the city, in a small zone near the creek, where the native grasses and flowers and the proposed reserve continue to survive, people can see crocuses in bloom each spring. You can drive, walk, ride a bike, or take the bus, anyone in the city can get there and see some of these iconic flowers of a prairie summer. Blanket flower, or galardia, is there. Purple prairie smoke, or three-flowered avens, beard tongue, moss flock, scarlet malepasture sage, the asters, the golden rods, there are many, just to name a few. Our supporters, naturalists from Nature Regina, have recorded those, and more than 100 other plant species on the site, as well as many native insects, mammals, and birds. Pairs of meadowlarks are nesting there, and endangered species like the barn swallow hunt over the grassland along with Swainson's hawks and other birds. Though these birds and the other creatures that depend on the grassland do not ask for much, simply that we let them continue to live in a tiny slice of what the Regina Plains was only 150 years ago, before the native grassland was plowed under. For now, that will be enough, and I think it would keep the costs down for the city. But in the future, conservation organizations in this province could partner with the city, as I said, to access funding that would improve or expand the diversity of life on the site, as well as some climate change mitigation and infrastructure for public access. In an age where we are becoming aware that human activities are rapidly degrading the landscapes, the woodlands, wetlands, and prairies, that the more the human world depends on, people need to see that communities are taking steps in the other direction. And in areas like Regina, where the natural world has been radically altered, that means working to heal damaged places that still show signs of life. In closing, I'd like to give credit to my friend David Hall, who first drew our attention to this place several years ago. Dave is with us here today, and I'm very grateful that he did that. He's a retired biology teacher from Luther High School. That started us off investigating this place and discovering its many treasures. I'd like to thank as well Councilors David Fro and Shannon Zikidniak for their ongoing support of our efforts to have this grassland recognized and conserved officially. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Counselor Fro, go ahead.
Thank you to the chair. Trevor, thanks for your presentation today, but also for your writing and for your advocacy. Certainly important work. One of the facts of this area that we've documented in the motion is that there will be some disturbance. There's a water main trunk that will be going through, and that's important infrastructure. We understand that that trunk is in an area perhaps not quite as sensitive, but my question to you is, given that there's going to be some construction happening in, I guess, what was the fairways, what might the city consider when the reclamation and sort of remediation of that soil happens? As in, you know, what best practice work have you seen done, or what might Nature Regina be able to offer to ensure that we're using, you know, natural grasses and natural trees, given what we're trying to accomplish here? In some ways, it's a happy coincidence, it's a challenge, but it might actually provide a stepping point to do more.
Yeah, it's a terrific opportunity for the city to show its capacity and to learn something and do some research on what can be done when areas are disturbed, and you want to try to recover them to something that has climate change values for mitigation and so on, but also has biodiversity values. And there is an increasing culture and industry in the prairie provinces now of native prairie restoration. And in fact, just this summer, I was just sort of on the edge of an organization that was putting together a site south of Indian Head, about 70 acres of land. It's all being restored. It was growing crops last year, and it's being restored to native prairie. They brought in the experts from just across the border in Manitoba. The Skinner Company is very good at this, and they came with their cedar and diverse set of, I think it was 70 species of plants, which is one of the highest I've ever heard of, and they seeded it. Now weeds come up in the first year, it happens. The annual weeds will be there. Anybody who's been on a farm knows this. But you be patient, you keep working with it, do a little bit of weed control, and in the next couple of years, the natives will come through, and you will get a much more diverse site than there was there before. I think other cities have gone through this experience. If you talk to your colleagues in Winnipeg, where they've done native restorations, for example, right around the Human Rights Museum in downtown Winnipeg, there's a beautiful tall grass prairie restoration been done on a small site, but they did a really good job. It can be done. You just find the right people to work with. Talk to people in other cities who've gone through this.
Thanks, Trevor. Last question is, you know, we do have complementary goals in our Parks Master Plan that talk about natural space and the usage of grasses, natural grasses, for all the reasons you and Dale spoke about. Can you speak to why there might be some benefits more broadly as a city to encourage the introduction of native grasses, but also native shrubs and plants, both as it relates to perhaps climate change adaptation, but also as it relates to maybe saving money and saving water and things like that? Have you seen some of that done elsewhere as we look not just at this site, but more broadly about the uses of natural space?
Yeah, one of the things that comes to mind is that, you know, in general, I think our cities try to lead the way, to show some leadership, so the private citizens will perhaps follow some of the things, the values that the city is putting forward. And so if our citizens see that the city itself is doing this kind of thing, perhaps on their own private properties, they will start to put in more diverse native plantings and things. We have folks here in the audience, my friend Michael behind me here, who's got a beautifully diverse yard with native grasses that he and, you know, his wife had planted, and they nurture every year. There are people like this Dale Jurdis himself, has a tremendously diverse yard. But those are just individual models. If the city starts to do it, I think more and more people will, on their own properties, do it. Maybe we'll have some businesses decide to use a native restoration. You know, they can find funding too. Businesses can find the funding to make this kind of stuff happen, and it will make the city in general more resilient. We don't know how much drought and flood is going to be coming our way, but we do know that these, these plants that have been here for 10,000 years, they understand how to survive.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Harriet. You can return to the gallery. And with that, we are at 2:37. We'll take our mandatory 15-minute break, so we will be back at 2:52. Find their seats. We'll get started in about a minute. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Get folks to take their seats. Next, I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-161, William Wells. Afternoon, Mr. Wells.
Good afternoon.
I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions. Go ahead when you're ready.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to speak to you with respect to the motion put forward by Councillor Froh. My name is William Wells. I live in, I reside in the city of Regina, and I am here today on behalf of the Enviro Collective Network, which has submitted a document to you. My intention, given, I know you have a long day and a lot of delegations so far, I will try to summarize our comments to you in three points. First point is the context. The motion presented responds to city policies, city bylaws, city master plans, and so on. So it's consistent with what you're trying to achieve on behalf of the residents of the city. But I also submit that it's consistent with provincial and national and international objectives. So you're part of a larger discussion in terms of how do we address things like biodiversity. And as you know, there are conferences that are held around the world on an annual basis trying to address those issues. Second one I wanted to mention is sort of leadership and legacy. This parcel of land is unique, and you have the opportunity to create a legacy with it. In most of your decisions, you do create legacies. Whether they're viewed positively is up to our children, but we think we're doing the right thing. But this is a case where I think it will be seen as a positive legacy. Because once it's gone, it's gone. You don't bring it back. You don't reinvent. These are not dare wolves that you recreate. The third one, I want to commend on behalf of the organization, Councillor Froh's willingness to come out in advance and work with our community, with parts of civil society, to come up with a solution and bring the solution to you, as opposed to a process where we raise issues, you go back, you think about it, you have a committee, you have a meeting, you have a whatever, and the process takes a protracted period of time to move ahead your own policies and bylaws and plans. So I would encourage councils to think about other ways of emulating Councillor Froh's approach of, let's engage with the community and bring the solutions here, as opposed to bringing a process here. So those are my three comments based on our submission, and if there are questions, certainly interested in answering those questions, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. I'll check and see if my colleagues have questions for you. Seeing none, you're off the hook.
Hopefully, hopefully it was helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you for presenting today. Okay, next, I'd like to call delegation DE 25-162, Jesse Morris. Jesse, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. So I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to answer any questions council members may have for you. Go ahead when you're ready.
Awesome. My name is Jesse Morris, and I'm a resident of Regina, Saskatchewan, and I am representing the Off-Leash Dog Park User Group, and you can call us Old Pug. We wish to speak in favor of the Municipal Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve. Old Pug is an advocacy committee representing nearly 3,000 residents from wards across Regina. Our mission is to advocate for interspecies harmony in the Queen City. Through education and training, and by working with the city administration to develop off-leash spaces, we hope to make Regina a dog-friendly city. Right now, with limited support or education for new dog owners, and limited opportunities for off-leash enrichment for dogs and their owners, we see and hear too many stories of unnecessary friction between our members and non-members, but this is something that we are keen to rectify. So what does this have to do with the Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve? Simply put, protecting our ecosystem and what is left of our grasslands is a decision that benefits us all. When dog park users seek out off-leash spaces, it's not always about play and interacting with other dogs. In many-- with other dogs. In many, and potentially most instances, we are actually seeking freedom and opportunity to explore natural spaces with our dogs. We're seeking to connect with nature and to provide those enriching experiences to our canine companions, and we're seeking more than a concrete world that a dog is limited to exploring at the end of a six-foot leash. This land has sustained us and given us the tools to build incredible communities. The Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve is an opportunity to protect our natural history and safeguard it for the future. What's more, it's an opportunity to offer accessible everyday enrichment to the residents of every ward within the boundaries of our city. Currently, any resident of Regina that wishes to go for a hike or spend time in nature has to leave city limits in order to do so. Everything else is a curated, cultivated, albeit beautiful, experience. Regina has the most hand-planted trees per capita of any city in Canada, and that is awesome for us, but consider what that means. There are almost no wild spaces to explore. The opportunity to protect one of the few remaining wild spaces, to rehabilitate it and share it with future generations, is one that we believe we cannot afford to pass up. The Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve at the Old Craig Golf Course would be our neighbor as the Cathy Lauritsen Off Leash Park, and this is the most popular of all of the dog parks in our city. It's also the best dog park in our city for offering something akin to an own, uh, to uncultivated nature. We appreciate the work that the city has done in cutting our walking paths and allowing native grasses to grow, thus providing our dogs with interesting and enriching experiences within the park, and we feel it's important to highlight the overlap that occurs between these two spaces, the Cathy Lauritsen and the Old Craig Golf Course. Um, because in spring and winter, it's extremely common to see our intrepid canine explorers crossing the creek to do a little bit of sniffing and snooping on the other side. So Old Pug has spoken with Nature Regina, and we are determined to support each other's causes and work together to ensure that there is harmony on both sides of the creek. So my final thought is this: We live in a concrete jungle, but what do we say to each other when life is heavy and we are feeling disconnected? We say, "Go outside, touch grass." With this in mind, we are asking you, our esteemed city councillors, to vote in favor of this motion to protect our grasslands for all residents from now until forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Uh, let's see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for your presentation today. You can go ahead and disconnect.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have communications on item MN 25-12. Uh, can I have a motion to receive and file the following communications? CP 25-126 Evelyn Janiskew, CP 25-127 Andrew Sinnett, CP 25-128 Roger Petrie and Margaret Asmus, CP 25-129 Fran Curbs, CP 25-130 Brenda McLaughlin, and CP 25-131 Leon Linz. Counselor Siqueez, thank you, and a secondar, Counselor Radens. I will call the question, any opposed? And carried. So we will now consider motion MN 25-12 Municipal Grasslands Biodiversity Reserve, and I will ask Counselor Fro to please introduce his motion.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Um, thank you to the delegates, uh, today and the organizations they represent. I think really today, briefly, the motion is about, you know, certainly protecting part of our, our history and story as prairie people. I think certainly our connection to grasslands is not only part of our DNA, but maybe our story as Regina Plains. I suspect we're all proud that we live in one of the most productive agricultural regions on earth. It also happens to be one of the most changed landscapes on earth, and perhaps nowhere else in the world has an ecosystem been changed more than where we, uh, sit today. So in a lot of ways, I think this motion is, is simple. It seeks to protect a smart parcel of land. We've got to discern whether it's 50 or 55 acres, uh, and certainly the species, uh, that live there. Um, it's not pristine, to be sure, but I think protecting it shows that, uh, we're interested in finding a balance between sustainability and development. But I think actually really it's about optimism, because if we can do it here, we might be able to start the process of reclaiming and restoring, uh, more lands and, and grasslands within our city. Uh, and certainly we heard today that if we do that, we unleash some of the power of grasslands, be that carbon storage, water management, or biodiversity. Um, I hope we can pass the unanimously. Um, either way, I want to thank administration. I think we've done this right. They've been very helpful, along with Nature Regina. We've aligned this with city, uh, policy. Uh, and, uh, in the end, and, you know, we live in a rapidly changing environment, um, but I can't think of anything better than heading out with, uh, with my kids and going through a walk, uh, through the, uh, through the grass. So, um, I think I'll leave it there. Um, one small piece when we close, but we'll see if any of my colleagues have, have any, uh, have any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Fro. Uh, so that was introduction. Uh, I will ask for a secondar for that, please. Counselor Zakidniak, thank you. Okay, Counselor Fro, uh, would you like to speak to the motion any further than your opening remarks?
Um, maybe just a question through the chair to administration, um, uh, which is, I don't know if it's just a courtesy or, or Deb, but understanding, uh, what we heard today and some of the, the offering of the delegates, but knowing that we have a water main trunk, uh, moving through, it sounds like actually it's, it's a great opportunity to sort of test some, uh, reclamation, uh, that advances our park master plan, but also asserts to inform how we do other work. When is that work planned to happen? Uh, and do you see the offers from some of the delegates and conservationists as, as, as a useful tool so we can look at, uh, remediating that land in the correct way?
We'd like to speak to that. Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the chair. Uh, so absolutely, we see that as an opportunity to partner, to, uh, to learn, to remediate the, the area, to meet the needs. Uh, and so we'll have those conversations long before we put a contract out to make sure we get the right seed mixture and then all the complex things like that. As far as the work, um, that area is probably in the 2029 timeframe, 2028 at the very earliest. So we're a few years away, and we've got lots of time to plan for it.
Thanks, George. Thank you. Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so this work actually began, uh, last term, and as, um, uh, Mr. Trevor Harriet sort of, uh, indicated in terms of like speaking about my support, and I think that it's important to note, um, that former councillor Cheryl Stadnichuk, um, actually took the lead on this file last term, and her and I were working with the, uh, on this, um, concept with Nature Regina and speaking with administration. And there were initially some obstacles to proceeding with this, but it's nice to see that, um, now, um, I'm, I'm not seeing any of those obstacles, and I'm seeing like lots of support for this concept. Uh, like there was a potential other, uh, interest in development. I'm not seeing that anymore. So this, it looks like free and clear for this to move ahead, and I'm really excited about it. Um, I do have a, a question in terms of the naming, like some folks have referred to this, um, pop, like this potential reserve with, uh, different names. But within the motion itself, it says for the city to work with Nature Regina to rename the lands in alignment with the civic naming committee guidelines. So I just wanted to ask about that, but I also wanted to, um, like, on, in that vein, there was, um, a suggestion that certainly we need to embrace, uh, reconciliation as, as we're, um, moving down, and this was mentioned last term as well, as we are exploring, uh, if we move forward with this. So how does that process work? And I know the civic naming committee guidelines need to be updated. Do they currently have an indigenous lens? Is that something we're working on? Um, what would be the process for how that would work? Through the chair.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, with respect to your question, Counselor Zakidniak, um, the current civic naming policy right now, in terms of how it, uh, purports to, um, designate, um, parks for indigenous naming, um, I believe is 50% of all new parks in all new subdivisions, something to that effect. This, this, I think, would be one of those unique situations whereby, um, maybe we, maybe council would want to initiate a formal naming process where people could submit names, and then the civic naming committee could be convened. It could look at the names, um, under a number of criteria, and if, if council so directed that an indigenous name be chosen, then that would be the criteria by which people would apply, and we could look at, uh, suitable names, and ultimately, uh, council has the prerogative to name a park, um, of its choosing.
Okay. Um, personally, I, I would like to see there, that an indigenous name, uh, for this. So, um, I understand the process isn't, it just says for administration to work together. Um, how do we proceed with this? Administration will take it away, consider how to do this, talk to Nature Regina, and then, uh, put a process in place, or, or is more direction needed?
Um, respectfully, I think, um, well, there's two ways we can go about it. Uh, we can take that as an undertaking and just do it, or if you want to make that, to solidify that, you would make of an amendment to this motion that, uh, city administration be directed to work with the various parties, whether that's Nature Regina or whomever, uh, to come up with a recommended process by which council could then, I would suggest, elicit names, um, as opposed to just having one individual stakeholder group or anybody just nominate something.
Okay. Well, I do have a friendly amendment to propose anyway, so I guess I will add that to that. And, and I want to say specifically, I think, you know, we've recently approved our indigenous framework. I think that it, in my opinion, um, I think it would be important that we have an indigenous name for, for this. Um, so, um, I had mentioned that I have an amendment at me. It's like, we'll, we'll have to check in with Counselor Fro to see if it's friendly or unfriendly. Um, so part of it is now, um, you have most of it, the clerks do, to put up. Um, and now I'm adding whatever Mr. Nichol just said, but with indigenous as the name that I'm suggesting. So, um, I guess, I, I think what I'm requesting is to pull that up whenever it's ready, to check in with Counselor Fro to see if it's friendly, and then I may have more to say.
Okay, well, just give us a moment. We'll get that written up and pulled up on the screen, so Counselor Fro, as the mover, can look at that. Just give us one moment.
Maybe while they're doing it, if I could, can I continue with my time for? Okay. So, um, the reason why I'm suggesting that we specifically consider an indigenous name for this, uh, new reserve is because, like, for a few reasons. One, um, in alignment with our indigenous framework. Two, because this is what we are trying to do, is preserve this land in a state or restore it to a state that it has been in since before settlers arrived in the land. So I think it really embodies what we are trying to celebrate with our indigenous framework. And so I think this is a, an perfect opportunity for us to truly embrace that framework and, uh, recognize that what we are doing is, is, is not, it's just a return to, um, these indigenous ways of knowing that, that we are hopefully starting to realize as a society that we should be more fully embracing and, um, and living. And so that's why I'd like to see that with this reserve specifically. And so, um, I had sent this up, out as a heads up, minus the indigenous naming piece, um, to council, because I realized it's like a substantial, um, amendment, but it's not really. I'm just, what I'm, like, it's, there's a lot of words, but what the words are indicating is that we should be using this reserve as an opportunity to enact other council-approved policies, like our Parks Master Plan, which calls for naturalization. So let's make sure we are, um, developing the processes and procedures, um, like as indicated in the Parks Master Plan, point 1, point 1.5, 1.1.2, like this is council-approved policy. So let's make sure we are moving forward on other council-approved policy with this land if it's approved. So
You have about 30 seconds left.
I'm just trying to tie things together that we've already approved to make sure that we are not just doing things in silos, that, but that if we set aside this land, that it's also meeting the objectives of the Parks Master Plan that we approved. I bet I have more seconds.
Nineteen.
I'm good for now.
Okay. So, Counselor Fro, I'll go to you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Through the chair, Counselor Zakidniak, thanks for that. I mean, I, I see this as enhancing, uh, the motion and certainly, uh, advancing previously approved, uh, policy. We want to use it not just as a research area, but as an area where we can test and then advance further uses of, uh, naturalized or natural, uh, species. Maybe a, a question to you on the last part, which I think the idea of an indigenous name is, is lovely. Certainly, folks have been referring to this area as Prairie Crocus. Um, is, are you looking to have an exclusive usage, or are you looking to, uh, as, uh, Mr. Nichol was saying, sort of solicit the opinions of the community, uh, with a, you know, serious consideration being given, uh, given to an indigenous name? Looking, are you, are you looking to be prescriptive, or are we looking to use our existing process, which is to solicit names, being mindful of our commitment to indigenization through the corporation?
Um, it's, it's my opinion, like, I'm not, like, I mean, like, I am most interested in saying, yes, we will select an indigenous name for the biodiversity reserve. That's my personal opinion. Um, it's not like, if that's the holdup in this being friendly or unfriendly, like, um, I guess we can negotiate on the floor of council, but it's my preference that we just say, "This is a perfect candidate for an indigenous name. Let's just move forward with that."
Might we, might, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, I think, I appreciate where you're coming from, and I think an indigenous name would be great. I, I'm not sure I want to be prescriptive i- 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 in that today. Um, but I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure of the pro, I mean, I think we talked about we have a, we have a process to solicit names, uh, and here we're being prescriptive. So could we look for some guidance from administration on that?
Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just threw the, the option out there that, um, administration, we would be working with the civic naming committee that is housed in the clerk's office to develop a process, and that could be that we would solicit, uh, put out a call for interested names, like many communities do when they're naming a bridge or, uh, a thoroughfare or something. And we could say that, you know, we are looking for any and all names, including those of indigenous. Uh, there could be local celebrity names. There could be founding partners, et cetera. Like, if you want to, if you want to keep it as open as you can, we can make sure it's as open as it can be.
Yeah, I, I think what through the chair, and I see Ms. Low has, has come here as well. We might want to seek guidance from her. I think, you know, I'd be, I, my opinion as to the name doesn't matter. I'd be looking for, uh, those that have stewed and worked on this land. I have heard today that they're quite interested in soliciting, uh, traditional knowledge, uh, and in our broader work as it relates to reconciliation. So perhaps we can check with Ms. Low for some guidance, and, and then we can move on.
Go ahead.
Hey, thanks through the chair. I just wanted, I think this is good. I love to include indigenous lens and worldview where we can. I just want to flag that sometimes, um, well, most times, when it comes to indigenous names, there's always ceremony and protocol that needs to be followed. So there's pieces of that that, depending on the location and where we are, may have impact. So I think this is something that we can flag, but it, I'd really like to consult the elders advisory committee first, um, and make sure they're on board with the space and the land and, and helping with the process and the development of that. I think that would be the best practice going forward.
Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
So perhaps then instead, three could say something like, direct administration to work with the elders advisory committee and Nature Regina to develop, uh, a process, um, for a name with a preference given to an indigenous name, something like that.
It's beautiful.
Oh, thank you. So, does that, does that work?
We'll check with, we'll check with Counselor Fro once we get it.
As long as we're not being prescriptive and we're looking to Nature Regina and, and, you know, our indigenous community to determine the right name, I'm, I'm fine with that. Thanks for the guidance.
Okay, just give us one moment, and we will get that typed up.
On the amendment, well, well, but I guess, so is, is it confirmed, Counselor Fro? Is this a friendly amendment?
Counselor Fro? So just to, can you just check and deter, or just confirm that you're okay with this as a friendly amendment rather than a, uh, official amendment?
Yes, I view it as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
That's very friendly of you, and I appreciate it, and I'm happy to support this motion. Thank you, Counselor Fro.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. That was very Okay. Thank you. That was very friendly of everybody. Okay. Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
This is the main motion now?
We only have a main motion. So we, there was no amendment, because it was a friendly amendment. So the, this is all encompassing of the main motion with this friendly amendment that's on, up on the screen.
Okay. I, my question with, I guess, point number one, and 1.5 and 1.2, would this increase the cost from what we were initially presented from Nature Regina?
Who would like to answer that? Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Through the Chair, thank you for that question, Councilor Turnbull. So those are key components that were included within the city's Parks Master Plan that was adopted by council last year. And so that is work that is ongoing. We will be doing some work with forestry plan that will bring us the information related to the forest and looking to partner likely with the university to get some of the other information. So that work is included. It is part of the goals within the Parks Master Plan, and it is work that will be undertaken.
Sorry, I will clarify. I understand it meets the goals of the Parks Master Plan, but I did ask if this was an add to the budget cost of that line item, because it says direct and not consider. So I was just wondering if we should make it consider so that we could look at it in terms of everything within the budget as it comes up.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I don't think that additional costs for the work related to the grasslands would be included within the budget, whereas the other work would be already undertaken related to the forest.
So, so this would be a budget increase, correct?
Potentially, yes.
So I guess I don't know if I can make a friendly amendment, but I would like to take the direct and make it a consider so that we could look at it in terms of our whole budgeting process.
Okay. So, sorry, go ahead to Councilor Turnbull. Can you ask your question for what you are looking for a change?
I guess it would be from the word "direct" to "consider." So it goes along with the consider items in our budgeting when we go forward, because "direct," if I understand, I can ask the city manager.
Go ahead, Ms. Bryden.
Through the Chair, if I could clarify my answer. So I think what I'm reading is that the counselor is wishing that we use this space to advance those goals when we choose to advance those goals. Would that, just to create some clarification, so if there, when we are taking on the additional work and we put in a request in the budget, that, at that point in time, it would be a conversation for council to consider. I don't see this as directing us to add funds to the budget.
Okay. That is a great clarification. I'm just learning the ins and outs, and we've been warned. So, in that case, my other questions are, are there any, I think this has been pretty fleshed out, but are there any other obstacles or opportunities for that land that we haven't been aware of or any other things being considered?
Ms. Bryden?
Thank you. Through the Chair, no, there are not. At this time, that land has been vacant and a natural space, really, for several years, and we haven't gotten any indication for any other types of uses. And it is within the current floodway, and so any kind of urban development or other development wouldn't be allowed to occur.
Okay. So, and I guess, my assumption, which I'll get you to clarify, and I think you start to talk about it, between the airport noise and the floodplain, that land wouldn't be desirable for development anyways, correct?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay. So if that's the case, it sounds like this has been really well fleshed out and thought of, and I'm very much in support of this, and thank you for your work on it.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Turnbull? Okay. Seeing no further questions, except for Councilor Rasevich?
Yeah, well, through the Chair, just, again, the naming. Why do we have to have a preference? I mean, that's my opinion. Can we get multiple names and then it gets decided? It's like you were prescribing already what the name's going to be.
So can I recommend that if you feel differently about that, Councilor Rasevich, we could vote on number three separately?
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, point of clarification, Councilors Zekiniak, go ahead.
Yeah, which is, there's no, actually, it's saying to work with them to, like, like, it's supposed to be, I don't, maybe it changed with the wording, because it's supposed to be to develop, to determine a process for naming it. It's not actually supposed to, like, that's how it originally stated, that there would be a process with Nature Regina. It's the same thing, but now we're adding the elders advisory committee to it. And there's a preference for an indigenous name, but not prescriptive. So I think you flagged that the word "to determine a naming process," I think, is maybe a more accurate, rather than them just arbitrarily determining a name. So I think that's a fair point and a fair change if Councilor Fro's good with it, which just more accurately mirrors what it used to say.
Okay. Councilor Fro, just make sure I get your thoughts on it, too?
Yeah, so I guess, again, right, I mean, I think we're all, this has been a great process. I think what we've heard is that, you know, the objective here is to work with the elders advisory committee and Nature Regina on a naming process. I think we've heard from Nature Regina their interest in working with the community and respecting traditional knowledge. I think we can keep it at that and see what comes back. And that way, we can avoid having sort of debate, debate the word, sort of, a preference today. I suspect that the elders advisory committee and Nature Regina will do an incredible job and come back with a process and a name that makes sense for this parcel of land.
Okay, so, Councilors Zekiniak, I'm going to go back to you, because that was your wording on the, on the last piece with the preference. So I'll get your thoughts on having to leave in preference.
Okay, so now we're debating whether or not we should include with a preference for an indigenous name. Like, that's where we're at right now.
That's, yes, that's correct.
I mean, like, it doesn't matter. Like, the question is, like, whether I want to, like, turn this into an amendment if that piece goes away? I mean, like, that's my, yeah, that's it. So I, if I feel strongly enough about that inclusion that I want to make an amendment? I guess my question is, how, so this process, whatever is determined here, is that coming back to council? Like, will, when will council be apprised of the process?
Let me go to the acting city manager. Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, working with the elders advisor commis, committee and Nature Regina, keeping in mind, working with the clerk's office and the civic naming committee, I would see that whatever process is, we come up with, that will be shared with council. There'll be some public solicitation of names, and then a final decision, I believe, respectfully, would come back to council in some way, shape, or form.
All right. As you wish, with, with the last part of the sentence. I'm not going to make an amendment out of it.
Okay. Hold on one second. Can I ask one question? Do we, so, we have a process now for parks, for naming? Do we not?
We do, Mayor, but that is with respect to 50% of new parks in new subdivisions. This is something that's a little outside. This is, this is a park, it's a facility. This is when developers are going out into a new area of the city, and they are, say, they're going to build four parks in a subdivision. Our civic naming policy says at least two of those should be indigenous, but this isn't a housing development. This is just a standalone, one-off initiative.
Okay, so it's administration's perspective that we do not currently have a process that would apply to this particular type of law?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so, Councilors Zekiniak? Can you please state your amendment? So I guess...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not going to have an amendment that says with a preference for an indigenous name. That feels like a very silly amendment. So, because the elders advisory committee is captured there, my hope is that that will be captured, although not as explicitly as I would like, that it's still, like, I just, like, it's a bit stronger with that. That's my opinion, but so be it.
Okay.
I mean, it's not like, it's up to Councilor Fro to decide if he wants those words there or not.
Okay. Well, he, yeah, so, Councilor Fro does not want those words. You do not want to make an amendment to do that?
No, I'm not going to make an amendment that says with a preference for an indigenous name, but thank you for the opportunity.
We'll leave it as Councilor Fro has just indicated, ending at biodiversity grasslands.
And to be clear, though, like, it sounds like there will be the opportunity where council, like, this is the process that's been determined. If somebody objects to that process or wishes to discuss it further, there will still be an opportunity for there to be at least a heads up, should somebody wish to propose something different. Is that accurate?
I'll ask, let's ask the acting city manager. Mr. Nichol, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my understanding on this, Councilor Zekiniak, from based on what you've done, what this amendment says is, we'll work with these committees, and then I was taking the, I was taking the lead to say, and then we will put out a process. Council's decision would be at the very end when you say yea or nay to any list of names. I didn't think council wanted to get into the minutia of deciding which newspaper we advertised in or anything.
Okay. Okay, so, it's actually back to Councilor Rasevich? Okay. And Councilor Rasevich, I'll just ask you, with this change, do you still want to separate the vote, or do you want to leave it as is?
As, as is.
Okay. Okay. And do you have any other comments or questions?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions from council members? Seeing none, I'm going to go to Councilor Fro to close debate. Go ahead, Councilor Fro.
Yeah, thank you. Just in closing, through the Chair, I neglected perhaps to start to acknowledge not only my colleague Shannon, but also former Councilor Cheryl Zekiniak. Your names are very similar. Wait, Stadnichuk, Zekiniak? I was practicing that. They sound the same. You're both great people. No, thank you to you. Thank you to administration, Deb, you and your team, and Curtis, for the support on that and Nature Regina. I think just in closing, Trevor Harriet submitted his, his letter and then answered a few questions. So the last paragraph of his submission was left out, so I think I'll just close by reading it, because I think it's, it's great and optimistic and powerful. And it says, and I quote, "The pristine prairie is long gone, and this remnant is dominated by non-native grasses, to be sure. But the native species that remain here have not given up. We should follow their lead and not give up either. Healing damaged places can heal communities, too." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fro. With that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to delegations for MN 25-13, city rink ice time allocation and city facility prime time hours. I would like to call upon delegation Amanda Hungle to the delegation table. And once you're set up, I will get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, which city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to answer any questions we have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Hungle, resident of Regina and executive director of Hockey Regina, whom I'm here speaking on behalf of today. Formed in 1997, Hockey Regina or HRI is the governing body for all sanctioned minor hockey in Regina, which includes youth programming for ages five through 18. In this past season, we had 2,399 players on 156 teams through 24 divisions and tiers, utilizing over 11,000 hours of ice at 13 indoor facilities, and this included hosting over 2,600 games, 4,000 practices, and 10 local tournaments. To manage this, HRI activates a large volunteer base to facilitate hockey in our city. This includes over 1,000 individuals taking on roles such as coaches, managers, treasurers, and engaging further to support annual evaluations, tournaments, and other programming. Hockey Regina is also a strong contributor to the economy in Regina. In this upcoming season, we will host 11 tournaments. This will include approximately 368 teams, 5,700 participants, bringing over 14,000 individuals to the city. And during these tournaments, these families and fans will use over 7,500 hotel rooms with our partner, the Regina Hotel Association, and will shop and dine within the community, creating a larger positive economic spinoff. Hockey Regina's vision is to build community through hockey. We're on a focused and intentional journey to do just that through a mission to foster hockey experiences where all can learn, play, and succeed. Where constraints such as ice availability exist, Hockey Regina hopes to see a broad community consultation and forewarning of potential ice allocations before extensive planning, communication, and agreements have been put in place based on already communicated and provided allocations. In the coming season, Hockey Regina is on track to grow its participant base for the first time since 2017. At an estimated 2% growth that we now see could be 6%, this alone will equate to an increased demand in required ice. At this point in the year, Hockey Regina has already scheduled and communicated evaluation schedules to over 1,800 families who have then planned accordingly. Hockey Regina tournament registrations are open, with teams already being accepted so that travel plans can be put in place. Regarding teams, we have six teams in provincial-based leagues whose scheduling is complete, another 23 teams whose scheduling is underway and will be finalized in September. All of these teams play in provincial-based leagues where a delay in scheduling may not be feasible, leaving HRI teams and approximately 375 players and families without a league to play in, or where a delay would cause a spider web of impact across southern Saskatchewan to over 100 teams and 1,500 players and families. With the driving mission to foster hockey experiences where all can learn, play, and succeed, Hockey Regina has many community initiatives planned for the season as well. For example, a partnership with Bower First Shift, a program aimed at providing access to hockey to those who face economic barriers. Hockey Regina will offer three cohorts of this, including an all-female cohort in alignment with our Female Growth and Development Action Plan, and an all-indigenous cohort in partnership with One Hoop. These programs have been, have executed agreements, are scheduled, with registrations open and communicated. Beyond this single program, this season, Hockey Regina is proud to be partnering with a number of local organizations and businesses to grow the game and decrease barriers to hockey for groups and demographics that historically have not had equitable access and opportunity. Beyond Bower First Shift and One Hoop, this includes Black and Sask, U of R Indigenous Athletes Circle, Sports Venture, Extreme Hockey and Sport, Western Cycle Source for Sports, Westridge Construction, and the U of R Cougar Hockey Program. In 2017, the city began taking an arena offline each season to complete needed renovations. To manage this decreased ice allocation, the organization reduced allocations to teams and did not provide additional development or community programming as we are now. This left Hockey Regina out of step with Hockey Canada's long-term player development models, disconnected from the community, and saw, and we saw teams seek practice ice outside of the city as safety concern. HRI also strives to effectively utilize ice in alignment with long-term player development models and to manage constraints like this that previously existed. This includes two to three teams on the ice at a time in the under-seven division, two to four teams on the ice at a time in the under-nine division, and two teams on ice for many practices at the under-eleven and under-thirteen divisions. Overall, Hockey Regina is moving forward under a strategic plan that is in lockstep with the city's strategic priorities of a vibrant community, economic prosperity, and community safety and well-being. A motion of this nature at this point in the year would be catastrophic impact to the organization's traditional programming, impacting over 2,000 local families and more potentially provincially, and risking the community initiatives scheduled and in place to provide access to sport and make hockey in our community more accessible for all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you for your presentation. A few questions for you. Councilor Burton, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation, Amanda. I coached myself hockey right from what was called Initiation to Midget, U 70, U 18 now. I served on the Hockey Regina Board for five years. I'm a big supporter of Hockey Regina. I'm also a big supporter of all ice sports that use these arenas here for that. A couple of questions here. How many weight tournaments would teams go to every year that are outside Saskatoon, Medicine Hat, Bismarck, Brandon?
It's going to vary depending on the division, but, you know, we could say an average of maybe one to three.
One to three for each of them for that. And so I have a, a practice Thursday, a game Friday, a game Sunday, and my team's going somewhere. What happens to those games? Because I'm going to this tournament.
So where we've provided ice allocations for games and scheduling, we'll try to facilitate changes between teams for that ice.
So changes in the scheduling here for that. And then what happens if a blizzard rolls? And then what happens if a blizzard rolls through and a team can't make it in or make it out for a, a game, an individual game or?
Yeah, inclement weather can certainly be a concern, so where that exists, then we'll have to try to find time to reschedule those.
So it would be safe to say that rescheduling is a fairly commonplace activity within Hockey Regina from my experience, and would you agree with that?
Yeah, we try to minimize it by a much more effective process going forward, but certainly weather happens and we have to make those changes.
Thank you. So at the start of each season, 100% of City's Regina's primetime ice time is allocated. How many hours would be returned a year from Hockey Regina, for example? Do you have any under number on that front?
I don't have the exact number. That might be something that administration could provide.
Okay. So according to the numbers I have that, that they have, is that they say on average here 12.6% of the?
Counsel Burton, that'd be a good thing to bring up when you're talking on your time, so this is just for questions.
Yeah, you betcha, with that. So I guess Hockey Regina's vision is to build community through hockey, and I guess, do you see that building a community as part of lifelong participation? The seeds you plant with Hockey Regina as a child, is that, is that seed what you're looking to plant for lifelong participation as a result?
Yeah, we're certainly advocates of sport for life and a hockey for life mentality, certainly.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming down today. I still a huge supporter of Hockey Regina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Burton.
Thank you, Counselor Turnbull, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for presenting. I just had a couple of questions, which are mostly to do with my own not knowing, so bear with me. I was just wondering, you were talking about being inclusive and being more things, and so I was wondering about abilities like sledge hockey and getting more gender participation and all ages abilities and with that with, with Hockey Regina. Do you coordinate with wheelchair sports and sledge hockey and, and those?
So that might be any question for administration, so I believe sledge hockey would be another user group.
Okay.
That they would provide an allocation.
So they're not through Hockey Regina?
Yeah, so in terms of, like Hockey Regina supports an organization called Superheroes. So the intent there is to provide individuals with access to hockey specifically in non-traditional ways where they may need additional equipment or playing, so.
Yeah, so I think that's why I naturally asked you, because what you just said sounds exactly like inclusive support. So I, I guess, thank you for your time and for educating me, and I will ask some questions from administration.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turnbull. Counselor Mancinelli, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. I'm totally without any knowledge on this subject. I haven't encountered it myself, and discussing this ahead of time and trying to get my head around it. I think that the actual wish behind this motion is to get something on the floor to discuss and find some concession points and a middle ground and something for everyone to come out of and kind of plan behind. Listening to your summary and some of the obstacles you're coming through, is there a middle ground or a concession point or some kind of a middle of the road that you can see that might work for all groups have gotten together? To get the ice time in a respectable hour? Sounds like Counselor Burton was talking about return time, but that is a little bit tricky to plan, because it's usually because of increment weather. Have you thought of anything through this whole dilemma that might put a little bit on the table we can discuss?
Yeah, I mean, the, and certainly around the notion of, you know, hockey for life and participants for life. The ideal situation I think we would see would just see the off-season planning. It really is just the nature of the timing that makes things really tricky for us at this point in the season, particularly in terms of, you know, where we have been anticipating potentially flat participation, and now we're seeing probably 2% to 6% growth. We haven't even planned to be able to allocate that amount of ice time, and that could be anywhere upwards to 10 more teams in terms of the ice allocation.
One more question from my understanding, because I haven't experienced it. So when we talk about our indoor aquatic facility, I've made a big deal about us supplying a regional asset, but when I think about hockey, like, there's rinks everywhere across Saskatchewan, you talked about the dangers of going outside of Regina for travel, you know, winter weather, highways, I get that. How are, how are teams treated when they're looking for ice time around Regina? Do they get competitive rates? How does it compare to operating from within Regina? Is there an effect on that? Is it more expensive when we go outside the borders of Regina for Hockey Regina?
In terms of facilitating ice within our allocation?
Outside of Regina? If you guys are forced to go beyond Regina's borders, how does that turn out?
Outside of Regina, I couldn't speak for certain on the rates, but I believe they would be an increased rate in comparison to what Hockey Regina would receive from the city.
Good to know, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frow, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, and I think it's clear we want to focus on the problem we're actually trying to solve here, which is where my question is hopefully tries to get at. So as someone that spends a great deal of time scheduling ice time and building a sport and building community, thank you for that. What do you see as the challenge as it relates ice time around process and utilization? Right, so process optimization, utilization, so as in, you know, clearly you do, you have a really difficult job, right? And there's bad weather and there's games. When you look at ice time allocation and our limited finite ice time, how much of this from your perspective is, is a process piece and a utilization piece versus we just don't have enough rinks, right? Maybe we're doing a great job today, I'm also learning as well.
Yeah, I think the, I think it's a really good question. It's something that we're striving to address internally this year. We're in the midst of a technology transition that will positively impact our scheduling, and we are intending, we will see after the season, but to be able to even more effectively and efficiently utilize that ice that is our allocation. The struggles do come up in terms of largely when we get into, like, March, for example, we're moving into playoffs. Now we have, you know, a best-of-three series. It ends in two games instead of three games, so that's that unpredictable piece that Counsel Burton was alluding to as well, and then just things like weather. So it's, I think process is certainly a piece of it, but it's sometimes due to uncontrollable factors, which makes it even a bit trickier.
Sure, thank you. Counselor Mancinelli talked about, you know, most things are figure-outable if you find a middle ground. You just mentioned March gets a little trickier for you, so when you look at ice time allocation and your shared commitment for people to stay fit and, and stay active in a sport throughout their, their lifetime, does your concerns around scheduling and ice time, is it, is it more acute around that March timeframe? As in, is there a greater opportunity to work together and find a compromise perhaps in these fall to early months, and then things really tighten up as you get closer to spring? Or is it season-wide?
It's, I guess, season-wide. In the fall is very large, so that's what we have planned out already. When I talk about evaluations and those being communicated, that's October ice. It's communicated to families, they've planned around that already. And then in talking about these teams that are already have schedules submitted to these provincial leagues, you know, that is running October through to February. So those things are more concretely planned right now, which just makes it tricky, which I, I certainly respect trying to find a middle ground in this. The ideal state would be off-season with the ability to integrate it into things that are already planned this year for next year.
So is it fair to say with the right amount of time that Hockey Regina might be able to work with interested stakeholders to find sort of an inclusive and equitable ice time allocation? That, you know, some of the challenge, if I'm hearing from you, is, is the time, in terms of the time crunch right now?
So just, it's in terms of things already being executed and scheduled right now.
My last question is, is, I got a daughter who plays ringette, but is my, some of my kids play other sports. Give me, walk me through when a 10, 12, 15-year-old kid is playing hockey today. You know, what sort of ice times are we looking at? Or, to the extent that you can. Do we have examples today where there's nine-year-olds that are, you know, staying up till 10:30 at night to, to get on the ice? You know, what, what are we, what are we looking at, even just estimates? I think that would be a good piece of information sort of for us. Are we experiencing a challenge week by week where, you know, these, these kiddos are going to bed at midnight, or are we experiencing one-offs occasionally when something happens we don't like, where a kid's staying up past their bedtime?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we strive obviously by age group in terms to structure that. So we'll start programming on a weekday at 4:30 PM. So a little bit of a challenge getting from school to there, but a very reasonable time in terms of time of day. We did have a concern, for example, that we are trying to actively mitigate from last season, our U 13, this is 11 and 12-year-olds, a very large percentage of their games were, you know, from 8:00 to 9:30 PM. That we would view as pretty late for that age group and something that we would certainly want to pull back into the earlier in the evening. And then that is unfortunately sort of the expectation around U 15 and U 18, that they are using a lot of those old, those later time slots.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Hi, so I mean, there's been some talk about, like, is there some sort of middle ground, and I've heard you say, like, potentially, right? So, but what I'm wondering is, so let's say the motion changes, so it doesn't start at the beginning of the season, it starts later on this season, and it's just a pilot project to consider more limited changes than what's proposed in the motion. It's not my motion, so I'm just saying, if there were some changes to it, would you feel differently in terms of your level of opposition on behalf of your organization to this motion?
It's a very good question. I think there's a, sort of a large gap there for me, just in terms of what's the process to get there.
Yeah.
If the process would be that the whole allocation would pause and go back, and we wouldn't know what would be changing, that's what could impact, you know, those 395 players, 23 teams right now, because they're in the midst and those schedules have been completed or they are being completed.
Okay, so, but if there were, if there was, instead of changes happening immediately, but they were happening later on in the season, just to make sure I'm clear on what you're saying, that might help? Like, if the changes, let's say changes started in December instead of, when it is, the season starts in October, like, that extra two months where folks would be, have extra notice of changes, would that help appease some of your concerns?
So I think in terms of our process, you know, we're provided the full allocation that spans October through March 31st.
Uh-huh.
We're actively using, so we actually have teams that already have their full season scheduled in that, and another 23 that are doing that process right now. So it's, that's where that spider web impact occurs. So even if we say in December, you know, we're going to begin allocating, then we need to kind of pull that back through all of those teams to redo all of that scheduling and impact.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rasevich, go ahead.
Through the chair. So like you said, what it sounds like everything's booked, like you already have everything in place, everything's booked for practices and I guess games, right?
Yeah, so for a large chunk of our memberships, so our community and our development programming, that's all scheduled. Our evaluations, that's all scheduled. And then for a large chunk, a decent chunk of our teams now, so we'll be 29 come mid-September, that will be all scheduled.
So does, does it ever happen where sometimes, you know, they decide, oh, we're going to go into a tournament, we're going to go somewhere? Does that kind of come up sometimes?
Yes, it does.
So obviously, if that comes up, what happens to the ice time that they were scheduled? You know, and then they go to this tournament, does it just sit empty?
No, so that's where we're talking about moving that ice time within the organization, between teams potentially.
Oh. Okay, but if all the other teams already have a scheduled ice time, I'm just trying to figure that out. If you're moving, so, but if teams have already been scheduled, there's practice times and games, and they all of a sudden decide they're going to go away on some tournament, doesn't , I'm wondering, that ice time that's been vacated because they've left, that gets filled somehow?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll schedule and allocate out their, the allocated program allocation they'll get for games and for practices. That won't be 100% of our allocation, and then we'll accommodate some of those changes, right? And we'll have teams that will book additional practice time. So we don't allocate out their full program of practices.
Oh, so you're saying, okay, if a team goes away on a tournament, then you'll allocate more practice time for other teams? I guess I'm not understanding. I'm just, I guess I'm, huh. I'm just trying to figure, if teams have been allocated all this practice time and game time, then they take off and go to some tournament, Edmonton or Calgary, or go somewhere, oh, they're not using that ice time anymore, so it's vacant. And I'm wondering if those, are those just those spaces on some sort of a system where somebody could use it, but you're saying it gets backfilled somehow?
Yeah, so we won't, like, in terms of the long-term player development model, if, you know, a team, we will allocate out, say, 22 practices, they may have 30 practices in that season. So that ice won't be unused. If there was a situation, we would certainly turn it back to the city, but that's very minimal. So that ice would be used by another team.
Okay, so that means that other team just get more ice time, obviously? Because every team is scheduled, right? I thought, that's the way I'm understanding, everything, everything sort of scheduled and filled. But if a team goes away and they're not using that practice time or game time because they've gone on a tournament, then that void is being filled by other teams somehow, right?
Yeah, so in the end of a season, certain teams may elect to practice more than other teams.
Right, so they're getting more ice time. You're not wasting it, but they're getting more ice time.
Yeah, they may elect to practice more than other teams, yeah.
So that's, I guess those are the times I'm thinking, well, sometimes maybe that could go to senior hockey, potentially. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Amanda. I have a couple of questions myself. When do you get your allocation of ice time from the city? What month?
We'll receive two separate allocations, one for tournaments and the one for league play, and typically it's in May and early June.
May or June, okay. So, and then I think this has been answered, but your schedule is already locked in for the year already, all the way up, starting this fall, all the way through till March?
Yeah, so a large proportion of it. So we have evaluations scheduled, tournaments scheduled, a chunk of teams that are scheduled, and then that process is iterative now through until mid-October.
Okay, and like you said to Counsel Rasevich, you work hard to use up any ice time that might be available due to tournaments or otherwise to reallocate that back within the pool of the organization?
That's correct.
Okay. And then obviously you're not the only organization that has ice allocation, so I guess next question would be, what would be the impact of, to families if we were to make a decision to allocate specific ice time, rank hours, whatever it might be? What kind of impact would that have?
So in terms of projecting growth, we'd have a concern of how to manage that growth, because it wouldn't be included in our allocation currently. And then in terms of, it would depend, I guess, in terms of what the process looks like for the city to provide back. So it would depend when and where and what we currently already have scheduled in that timeframe versus, you know, if it's something that is unscheduled.
Would you say that would be stressful for families if they knew that the schedule that they've set for the year, given all their other kids' activities, school, all that, that they may have to change up that schedule if we were to make a decision that you'd have to reschedule times that are already booked in?
Yeah, I think it would absolutely be stressful, and then I think we just have to consider other stakeholders. So where, we operate our own leagues, Hockey Regina leagues, but we also have many teams that play in provincial-based leagues. So then if we are changing those, we need to connect with those leagues of that impact as well.
And would you say it's appropriate for city council to be diving into hour-by-hour or rank-by-rank ice allocation at this level when we already have a process established? Or do you think we should look more at a policy level to govern the overall ice allocation and make sure we consider all organizations with respect to ice allocation?
Yeah, I think the city has a strong policy for ice allocation, considering not-for-profit, considering economic prosperity, and considering those priorities. So in terms of stepping out of that policy alignment would be different.
Great, thank you so much. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your time and your presentation today. You can return to the gallery.
Thank you.
Okay, we have communications on item MN 25-13. Can I have a motion to receive and file the following communications? CP 25-132, Vicky Schultz from Skate Regina. CP 25-133, Sharon Davis, RSST. And CP 25-134, Leah Hubick, Regina Speed Skating Club. Counsel Burton and a seconder. Counsel Raddens, thank you. I'll call the question, any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider motion MN 25-13, city rink ice time allocation and city facility primetime hours, and I'll ask Counsel Burton to please introduce his motion. Go ahead, Counsel Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Roschinsky. The motion directs that city, that city council directed administration-
The motion directs that city, that city council directed administration to, one, dedicate ice time to support adult recreational hockey effective December first, twenty-twenty-five during the following designated times to ensure fair and equitable access. First time, Monday to Friday from nine PM to ten PM. And two, Saturday and Sunday, two ice slots, seven forty-five to eight forty-five and nine PM to ten PM. Number two, change the city facility prime time to a designated end time of ten PM. And three, establish a discount rate for any sport commencing after ten PM.
Okay, can I have a secondar for that? Counselor Bezo? Okay. Okay, Counselor Burton, would you like to speak to that?
I would.
Go ahead.
A year ago, a contract was signed without proper community consultation. Adult recreational hockey now finds itself at the brink of destruction as it's pushed further to extreme hours. Adults are now being offered the worst ice times ever at the brand center, ten forty-five to midnight, later than the latest city ice at ten fifteen PM. As we look to solutions, it is important that adult rec hockey does not do to other organizations what was done to adult rec hockey. But it's also important that adult recreational hockey survive, and that cannot happen without a bit of give. So I dialed back this motion to minimize the impact on other community groups. But importantly, this is a first step towards solving problems for multiple ice user groups. New policies, procedures, and technology needs to be pursued and adopted to ensure that fully booked ice at the start of the year does not go unutilized at the end of the year, and for example, enable many groups to have that chance to play in the big arenas for their finals and other important events. Hockey plays later than any other sport. Period. Today is an important day to enable adult recreational hockey to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to get my questions out of the way, and then I will allow others to, I'll go to others for their questions. Just to, to administration, can you comment on just point number three, establishing discount rate fees for any sport commencing after ten PM? Ms. Bryden?
Thank you. Through the chair, we already have a reduced rate for non-prime time ice, which would be after, well, we would establish, point number two, we can do administratively, we've already indicated to the council that we would do that, which would then mean that that ice time, starting at ten, would be at a discounted rate.
Okay, so you're saying that's already, and it works?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And that's point two and three, sorry?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I guess my, my comment is, and this is purely from logistics and the level that I think that we should be operating at, I am not in favor of point number one, I'm going to ask to separate the vote from point number one and then do points two and three together. Okay, so I'll, I'll ask that we vote on points two and three separately from point one. Like I said, I, I don't believe that this is the level that we should operate at. Counselor Burton, I appreciate the intent, but some of the words that you said in your opening remarks, I think would be more valid in a motion, talking about the overall process, procedure, and general oversight. And my fear of doing something like this, from what I've heard from community members and otherwise, is that we're going to create an infinite loop of scheduling conflicts as this is already set for this year. So that's my fear, so I'm, I'm not in favor of, of adjusting things for this season in particular. And so I'd like to just vote on the two separately for, for my own perception on this, and I'll leave it at that, and I'll go to the next in line, which is Counselor Turnbull. Go ahead.
I actually have a friendly amendment I would like to put to this. If you want to bring the friendly amendment up, I guess I'll have to ask Counselor Burton if it is friendly, but, so, just wait for it to come up. So my friendly amendment would be to direct administration to review any existing policies, guidelines, procedures, matrix or framework that assists in determining prioritization where there are competing bookings, so, and an overview of an existing matrix for determining fair and equitable allocation, and how allocation is determined when considering same facility and time booking requests with aspects to community well-being and recreational programs versus professional and elite sports, considering, consideration of the city's community well-being plan and strategic priorities, including both physical and mental health benefits to all citizens, all ages, gender, ability, mobility, adaptive needs of participants, youth and adult practice training and/or developed level of sports. Include residence, location of participants, and then just any recommendations to improve the matrix for community equity. And then I'd be looking to administration for what quarter and year. So the reason why I think this amendment is important, from watching council from the sidelines to now, it seems we're looking at it as a holistic picture. There's like so many different, there's only so much rink time, and there's so many different sports. And I think what we, we need is the report back on what, why are we making these decisions? What is the matrix? Are we considering these elements? And with this coming up, time after time again, we might need to look at our matrix to see what, what is causing these hiccups. Like, so, for example, and I can ask a question, actually I will ask a question.
Well, just hang on one second, so we need to get a couple of things sorted out. One is, we need to get the quarter and year, what would be reasonable for administration?
Excuse me, thank you, through the chair. So, through the chair, I just want to start with, currently, our arena allocation policy prioritizes youth and minors sport organizations during prime time based on a community benefit principle. This is a widely used principle across certainly Western Canada, and administration is currently in the process of reviewing our policy with many of these points already in mind, in terms of our allocation, with, and we're doing that in collaboration with cities across Western Canada, actually. So we're doing that work to update our policy, and we're doing that review work. In order to actually bring something back to council, which, doing the work is one thing, creating a report that brings it back to council adds a certain amount of time, it would kind of squeeze getting the, the work done, I would say. And in order to do it effectively so that we can have everything in order for the next ice season, we would probably actually have to have it done by the end of Q1 in order to do the allocations that we do for May. My team's probably going to fall over, I'm, I'm not sure that we can actually do the work in time and have a report that comes back to council. I would also like to just add, and I know this probably wasn't a question, but there is certain things that we don't have access to. For example, residence, location of the participants, the city of Regina, we don't have the list of participants, it's the user groups, so Hockey Regina, Ringat, Sledge, they all have their own user groups, we don't have that information. So that's one thing. I would also just like to point out that the change that occurred last year was not within the city administration's realm of changes. It wasn't a contract that the city made, and actually, we weren't informed of it on a real timely basis either. I would also like to add, there are currently about, I think, a hundred and thirty-five adult hockey teams that play as the cooperators, and some of them are run through a league that is run by RAIL, and they do play during adult prime time, time slots. So I just wanted to say those things. We are fully engaged in, in doing the work and prioritizing accessibility and inclusiveness is one of the things that we would be doing during that work.
So with that information, I guess Counselor Turnbull, it sounds like administration is essentially doing the work, and if we, if we do a directive from a council, it may delay completing the work if we do that. So I guess I'll just go back to you to see if you still want to proceed with this, or given the, what we've learned from administration, if we want them to kind of proceed as, as they were, I'll, I'll leave that question to you.
I guess my question would be with number C, so I don't, would it be better to put that at a, a later date, because I think the rest of it is sort of, what are you doing now? And then the C is the work to what you are going to make recommendations for. So would that, if we could make that to match your timeline, the C portion, because I think A and B is sort of like a report of what is happening.
Thank you, through the chair. We could probably report back with what is the results of the administrative policy. It's an administrative policy so that we can manage changes, but we could report back with the matrix and the final results of the, the outcomes of the policy work.
Yeah. And then if you wanted to change the date for C, so that, that's on your greater timeline to get the work done, so.
Through the chair, so you're saying the, the motion would change to just item C?
No, I was just saying, so it says quarter one, twenty-twenty-six for A and B, but I, listening to your concerns about the work and the timeline, I was just wondering if you'd like a later date for, for C to report back to you with the actual recommendations. But maybe I'm not making sense.
I, I think there's, I think there's a concern that if we proceed with A and B, then that would delay the timing of that work that's already being done, because there'd be an additional report, but, oh, go ahead, Ms. Burton.
Oh, through the chair, just a minute.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, as, as Ms. Bryden has explained, this is an admin policy review that we are working on. So with respect to the motion or amendment, we don't need it. We are coming back, we are going to do this, we clearly read the room that there are issues to be addressed in the hockey and the ice time scheduling. So I'll, I'll get Ms. Bryden to confirm this, but we're going to be doing this as part of this review that she's already explained, doing it with other Western Canadian jurisdictions. So I think it's pretty clear to us what we need to do, and we'll come back. But it is an admins policy, and we can just let them know. Like this is a, this is a very sensitive issue in the city.
Thank you, through the chair, yes, that's what I was trying to say, only the city manager was more succinct.
So I think it's important that we have it reported back to, to council, so if you want to delete number C or whatever, but I think it is important to have, we want it directed back to council.
Yeah, so, so I guess maybe is the question, if administration had to put something up there for what that would look like, what, could you help us kind of craft that?
Thank you, through the chair, could we just take a quick recess?
Yeah, let's take, actually, let's take our fifteen-minute break right now. We'll be back at four thirty.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And I'm going to ask administration to clarify, if I could, who am I going to for clarification? Ms. Bryden, if you could try and provide some clarification for council on what work is being done in that?
Thank you through the chair. The work on our ice allocation policy, which relates to these points, or all of these points are included in that work, or for consideration in the policy, and that is underway at this point in time. And it is in collaboration with cities from across Western Canada to ensure jurisdictional consistency. And we would endeavor to bring back, if council so wishes, we would bring back a receive-and-file report with the results of that work. And I would indicate that we would do that by the end of Q2 of 2026.
Okay, so with that, I will go back to Councilor Turnbull, so you can indicate what you'd like for, to proceed with for your amendment.
So just to clarify, a motion will be required to bring the report back to council?
Thank you through the chair. We are already undergoing this work and we could provide information back to council. I don't think we need direction. We're already doing the work, so we could just bring information back to council.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand if we need the motion up here or not?
City manager, Jim Nichol, go ahead.
Procedurally, I'll defer to the clerk if she wants to suggest that you have a definitive motion, but we are fine with it. We, we, we've read the room, we understand where you're coming from, and we've publicly committed to bring an information report to council before the end of Q2 next year, just as Ms. Bryden outlined.
Okay, I'll get Ms. Ackerman to speak on this.
Through you, Mayor. I just want some clarification from administration. Ms. Bryden had said if it's the wish of council for us to report back, I just want to make sure that you do not require a formal motion from council to ensure that a report does come back with the work that you've done to a council meeting for a receive-and-file report.
Through the chair, that is correct. We do not require a motion from council.
Okay, well, I'll check with, Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
No motion required, and we're on the public record that this is going to happen. We won't need a motion. I can agree to that. I will just note the things I have listed there are important. I think you know that already. I think you understand. I think the whole city at this point is well aware of our rink problems and that we need to look at the holistic picture of what matters to us. And it's, it's hard. I did want to ask a question about the adaptive programs, current, at current state with the adaptive programs such as sledge hockey and that, where do they fit into the current schedule?
Through the chair, I'll refer that to Ms. Koder.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question through the chair. In the 2024-2025 season, we allocated 54.5 hours to sledge hockey, which was in line with their request for time.
Can, I guess, I'm learning, or those within the, I guess, windows that they, of time they wanted, or were they, oh, in the non-prime time, prime time? I'm going to screw up a lot talking about this, so please bear with me. But were they in the right windows of time?
Yes, these were prime time hours that were allocated to sledge. These were the hours that they requested through the, like, ice rental process.
I guess, my other questions would be, when we're balancing rink time and we're looking at community wellbeing and recreation versus the professional and elite sports, I think there's some conflict there. Because if, if you are someone who's training at a very high level for, like, the Olympics in any sport, you're going to take any time of training time you can absolutely get. And is that being, like, the same as for community wellbeing? I don't understand the different balance, which is why I think the report is important. But how do we look at that as a city? Do we have a differentiation between elite level or recreational or age-friendly and all of that?
Thank you through the chair. I'll start, and then I may defer that to Ms. Koder. But so the allocation of ice that the city does, so we have a block of ice time, I don't know, 6,000 hours, say, and we allocate that to the different user groups. So in Hockey Regina's case, so Hockey Regina, within their user group, they have, you know, everything from, I don't know if they're tier one, two, and three anymore. That's what they used to be when I was involved. And so your tier one players would be, you're more competitive, and then you'd have tier two and tier three. And they allocate those hours out to their teams based on their allocation process. So, and that is what happens. So we allocate to the user groups, they allocate accordingly, which, and those user groups would have the different levels of skill and ability within their groups. And if Ms. Koder has anything further to add?
Thank you. So what we do today is we allocate 1.25 hours a week per 16 registrants at the minor rate and one hour a week per 16 registrants at the adult rate for hockey. What that means is, earlier Ms. Hungo was speaking about the long-term athlete development strategy for hockey that comes from Hockey Canada. Hockey Canada would, for an elite level player, require more time than the 2.25 hours we are allocating per 16 players per week. So when you're asking if we are prioritizing youth or community-level sport, we are. Community-level sport receives first priority in our rinks.
Thank you for that explanation. And I'm sure I'll learn more when this future report comes, because there's a lot to learn. But I do appreciate your time and work on this and your, trying to figure this out. Because, yeah, it is a big issue in our city. So I will let the next person ask questions.
Councilor Furl, go ahead.
Yes, thank you through the chair. First, to my colleague, Council Burton, I appreciate and really respect your interest, really, as it relates to everything in our community. You're a champion volunteer, including hockey, and I applaud and share your interest in ensuring that everyone can stay active in our community at all ages. I think my interest is in figuring out how to do this at a policy level, so. I think my interest is in figuring out how to do this at a policy level, so finding a way where I'm able to support the objectives you're doing, but at the appropriate level, at a policy level. So I guess maybe a couple of questions for you or Min. My first question through the chair is likely for Min, and that's on, and Deb, you answered most of it, but, you know, given the work that you're doing today to be in lockstep with other municipalities, which is quite smart, how do you see, in terms of, how are we doing today from your team's perspective on utilization and process, right? Like, understanding there's nuances, right? There's bad weather, and teams go on tournaments, but on the whole, how are we feeling about utilization? Because there has been some commentary that, you know, this might just be an administrative thing that we can figure out offline, in terms of talking about utilization and trading and sort of, and things like that, and, you know, my preference would be for that to happen. So that's my first question.
Thank you through the chair. I'll start, and then I'll defer to Ms. Burton, as she's worked with more of the groups than I have, but certainly, as we work through this process, I have learned a lot, and I've had conversations with the new CEO over at Reel, and so we will be working, Reel will also be working in lockstep with the city in terms of this ice allocation policy as well. So I think I will acknowledge that there are certainly problems. There are always problems with these types of policies. There's, you know, there are, we have allocation conversations about swimming all the time, competitive swimming, if your families are involved in competitive swimming, there's always the fight for who gets the seven o'clock time slot instead of having to go at 5:30 in the morning. So I would say, you know, we're acknowledging, we understand there's problems, that's why we are undertaking this work already. Ms. Burton, do you have anything further to add?
So through the chair, at the policy level, you know, we have a policy today that looks at allocation, obviously prioritizing sort of youth groups, and from Administration's perspective, as part of the work that you're doing, or as an aside, does that policy need work to ensure, because inclusivity means everyone, including a 65 or 75-year-old that wants to stay active and healthy, how do we feel that that policy, how would we feel that the policy is meeting our objectives today? And does it need any adjustment from your perspective?
Thank you through the chair. That is the work that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions to Counselor Burton, and perhaps Administration can provide some context. Counselor Burton, your motion, the amended, or your scaled-down motion as presented, if a female user group that was net new, let's just say 50 women ringette players, wanted to in turn benefit from this recreational ice time, understanding that there's heavy demand on time, would they be able to benefit from this motion? You know, if there's a group of 50 women hockey players, or a group of seven-year-old boomball players or something like that, do they stand to benefit as well from this? And if so, can you walk me through how that might work?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, sorry, I guess you're pushing it there. Thank you for the question, Counselor Frel. The answer is, in the long term, yes. It would be, you know, hard to find a group in a short term to do that, but as we look at the request here, the scaled-down request, it was, you know, it does talk about adult recreational hockey, but absolutely, if there was a different gender that wanted to get into it, that they were trying to establish a team, then that's part of the process, that people, new teams in town, and you schedule against those teams. Every team is kind of set up separately, there's no umbrella organization, and so a new team definitely would have an opportunity to try and get in there, to get that time, and to be part of the whole system, absolutely.
So today, is ice time allocation prioritized by those that had had ice time or a team that has existed forever? As in, would the teams that are, that were sort of put out by this challenge, would they be the first teams in the queue effectively to get this ice time? Or would it be open to anyone that wanted to use it?
Yes, the policy is, existing contracts were generally honored in the past, that people would continue to use those. Often, new people, although we've got women on some teams, would join a men's hockey team to join as part of that, and then teams, sometimes over the years, they fold, a new team jumps in, and there's an opportunity for new teams to get into it.
Mark, you talked earlier, and you've often talked about, again, to the extent we can at the policy level of sort of out-of-town versus in-town. I know you wanted to speak to that, so I'm about to give you the opportunity to provide some context on out-of-town usage and in-town usage, and how that may be relevant to your motion.
Correct, yeah. Back in 2009, through the chair, back in 2009, I was chairman of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and at that point, consultants suggested closing four rinks, and we fought against that successfully, and at that point in time, people were already, 15 years ago, going out to those Qpar's, Viabanks, Odessa, Pens, Rolo, Milestone, all over the place, and so it's existed for years, this problem, that has really been festering and continues to be a problem, and it's actually now exacerbated by the fact that the towns east of Regina, the Emerald Parks, the White City and stuff, with their burgeoning growth of their communities, they're actually now consuming more ice, that we would skip past White City and Balgonia and go to Viabank and Odessa, and now those are actually getting booked up by other teams just immediately outside the city, so there's even more problems.
Thank you so much for that, Counselor Burton. Yeah, I think, you know, my perspective on this is, I share your interest and objective, and I share the mayor's concerns on the governance implications of us getting involved in ice time, and so perhaps my last question is to Administration, which is, you know, this is, my view is largely the purview of Administration, but we have a problem, and the city manager has acknowledged that. How confident are we that we can offline? Most things are figure-outable, right? How confident are we that offline, we can work to find a solution, you know, as it relates to this season, or we're talking about sort of next season? I mean, I see a pretty collaborative partner in Hockey Regina here. Is this something that, you know, Administration feels confident that they can take away and work on, so that we're not having to try to solve this on the floor of council?
Ms. Bryden?
Thank you through the chair. I would say, short answer is no. You know, I know Ms. Hungle talked about, you know, ice time that is given up because of tournaments or storms, and they reallocate it. You can't schedule a league around ice that may come up. So that's one thing. In order for us to solve this problem, say, identify, you know, a sheet of ice as per the motion, we have to go pull everything back and reallocate all of the ice time, and it really wouldn't matter if it was three hours a week, or 30 hours a week that we realocating, because it impacts all the user groups, because it's all allocated based on all the technical things that I would let Ms. Koder speak to. So, so no, if we could have solved this, we would have solved this. There is ice available for the men's hockey teams. It is not, excuse me, the ice that is available is not necessarily the hours that are being asked for.
And is that an answer long-term, or might that answer change next season before we've done our ice time allocations and after your view is done?
Through the chair, after we do our work, I expect that this problem will be solved. It will not be solved for the 25-26 season.
Okay, thank you. I, like many others, also play sports at 10:30 at night. It's not ideal. I share Counselor Burton's interest in solving a wrong and keeping our community healthy, and if there's some way that we can bring this to a policy level, where we're not allocating ice time on the floor of council, I want to find a way to support it, and so I'll stop there and look to Counselor Burton if there might be a method, whether it be now or in the future, to elevate this at a governance level, but I just want to applaud my colleague for his hard work in this respect, and reiterate my appreciation of that. Thank you.
Counselor Mansonelli, go ahead.
Thank you. Playing a sport for life, the kids who are allowing the ice time right now would be the adults of tomorrow's league. There'll also be the taxpayers who pay for the ice slips and everything else. Are ice slips a subsidized asset? In other words, do user fees pay for the use of the slip, or do taxes kind of backstop it?
Through the chair, the city subsidizes the arenas, I think 60%. They're subsidized. Yep. Oh, sorry, subsidized 40.
I wanted to bring that point home. When you guys are going through the matrix of decision-making that you're putting together for us, is there any consideration of the viewpoint of, you know, a 60-year-old taxpayer who's been subsidizing for so long, and wants to stay healthy, and wants to keep on playing their sport, just as kind of a lens for weighing on a decision? Because I think that that's kind of a, well, that's the way I kind of look at it, you know? Been paying taxes for 30 years, want to get to the rink that you paid for all these years, have all these fights on the way. I'm just making sure that these type of viewpoints are captured in the matrix decision when that framework comes. Through the chair.
Through the chair, in the work that we're doing on the policy, certainly age-friendly would be taken into consideration.
Okay, and I guess that would be for a lot of different things in the city, but sometimes that's not settled out, so I just wanted to really verbalize that for a moment. Through the chair, I totally respect Counselor Burton for bringing this forward. I wanted to find a concession and a middle point to support both Hockey Regina and the councilors wanting this motion, but hearing all the work that's gone on into it to this point, the timelines and the timeframes to get to this point in time, how detrimental it would be to the organizing that's gone into this, I don't want to upset the apple cart, even for the best intentions without considering Hockey Regina. To make this change when Administration's put so much time into addressing a problem that they've recognized, measured, and are working through, would make me wonder about how it would be affecting the outcomes and the work done to date, because it's really hard to diagnose the problem and implement a fix when you're changing it along the way. So knowing that it's this deeply invested in already, if there was some type of a concessionary change that could have come up in the meeting that would have fit everybody, I was all in for it. If this is still amended and something's found that Administration can work with, or something will come out, I don't want to vote against this, but if that can't be achieved by the time the vote is, I'm just, I can't support it because of the discussion that's happened today. So, thank you very much, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor Rossovich. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair, I agree with Counselor Mansonelli in terms of, you know, a lot of these 600, I guess the number can vary, but I've heard it's up to 600, and a lot of them are, you know, taxpayers, and they were young hockey players, and a lot of them were probably coaches, and probably fundraised and raised lots of money for hockey. That's tough. I guess my, I was wondering, like, rinks, like, are they only open at certain times? Like, is there, like, say during the day, does a rink open at 2:00? Does it open up at 5:00? Is it, can a rink open up sooner, maybe, just to expand some hours? I'm sure you guys probably thought of that, but I'm just sort of thinking that, you know, maybe that would expand an extra hour, hour or two for, possibly for senior men's hockey in this short term, in this short term till next year, whatever.
Thank you through the chair. As I described before, there is ice time available for all of the ice time requests that come in, including the group of teams Counselor Burton's representing, which I realize is approximately 20 teams that were displaced. Okay. Yeah. So, 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 so there is certainly ice time available. It's not within the timeframes necessarily that they're asking for. So there is ice times available at 6:00 in the morning, and there is ice time available at 10:30 at night, perhaps, but there's nothing available, like, the ice times available at 8:00 are not there for senior men's hockey.
Right, but what about like 5:00, or, or sorry, yeah, like, say 5:00 or something like that? No, 5:00 PM, or 4:00 PM.
Through the chair, I do believe there is some 4:00 PM time slots available, but I'll let Ms. Koder speak to what's actually available.
But maybe, yeah.
Joan, she can answer that if you like.
Okay, through the chair, and thank you for the question. Yes, we have some time slots that are, you know, 3:30 in the afternoon, ending at 4:30. Our, as Ms. Hungle mentioned, programs like Hockey Regina, or our, you know, our wonderful community Learn to Skate programs typically start at 4:30, so we have some time before that 4:30 start, but is there time today available from 5:00 to 6:00 PM for adults in Regina rinks? No. We have ample space to accommodate all of the senior teams who are displaced from Everas in city and cooperators' rinks, but they are in the evening. So these are in the late evening. These are going to be the post-10:00 PM slots, so 10:15, 10:30. We have, nobody is going without a place to play, it's just not at the time that they would like.
Right, right. And I guess I'm assuming those later times, and Counselor Burton, you can answer this question, I guess those later times would be, where I guess work better for the senior hockey than a time at, say, 2:00 in the afternoon, or 3:00 in the afternoon, I guess?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, obviously, the bell curve of adult recreational hockey is, the vast majority of players are in their 40s and 50s. These are the people that are working, they have families, they're coaching kids, they're coaching their kids' teams, and so they're busy, and that's why they're looking for that schedule the whole year. And yes, an adult can play at 10:15, and a kid you want to have in bed. Correct. But you can't play at 2:00 in the afternoon, and you can't play at noon either, as was suggested by somebody in the past, because even if you're on the ice for an hour, it takes a half hour to get dressed, and a half hour to get undressed at the end, and then you've got 15 minutes transit time, it's two and a half hour commitment if you said, well, go play noon hour hockey. It doesn't work.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to clarify what I heard. The first one is that we're voting on two and three separate. That'll be a separate vote, yes? And then, secondly, we've heard that Administration is working on reviewing their policy. They expect that the challenges presented today will be addressed not in this year, but the following year, and will be reporting back to us in Q2 of next year. Is that right?
Ms. Bryden?
Through the chair, yes, we will bring our administrative policy to council for information.
Receive-and-file. Yeah. Okay, so I guess the good news, I think, is that there already has been some common ground found, which is that Administration recognizes the problem, they are currently working on it. Now, as a result of this conversation, they're bringing it back to us, and the public will have the opportunity to see the changes that are going to be implemented to address the current problems and gaps. And so, and as noted, like, points two and three, they also agree with and are willing to take action on. So I do see, like, some common ground that has been reached due to the concerns expressed by Counselor Burton and other community members that honestly started last term, and so I agree that it is our place as elected officials to play in the policy area. Frankly, I don't have enough information to be able to make a decision on the floor of council about what is the appropriate allocation of ice time, and so that's where I wish to stay away from that level. I did want to support it, but I've heard concerns, and I think it's really important for me to have the adequate information before I make decisions. So I'm not comfortable with supporting number one. I am comfortable with the fact that there will be a policy review, and I want to put my faith in Administration to tackle the challenges that they've heard, and I'm happy that we will have the chance to see that solution. So I'm happy to support part two and three, and happy to see the results of that work, but won't be able to support number one, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just further to what Counselor Zakidniak summarized, and Ms. Bryden answered, yes, we will be working on a new policy. We'll be doing that across, you know, with our inter-jurisdictional comparators, but I think it's also equally important that everybody understands that our new policy still may not satisfy each and every individual group's needs. So we can have it done, and we'll work to make it the best we can, and maybe something new we'll learn that will facilitate a wildly successful resolution, but I don't think we should just think that this is going to solve everybody's issues with non-prime time usage.
Ms. Bryden, do you want to expand on that?
Thank you, I do want to expand on that. I just want to provide some clarity that- I just want to provide some clarity that the work that we're doing is not going to be just city administration. We will be collaborating with REAL and with the user groups.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Siklis, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I was just going to turn my light off because Acting City Manager kind of said what I wanted to say, which is, I don't think it's going to be this perfect solution, because I kind of look at it as, and we talked about it the other day, and some, and we talked about it during the break. And I thought I'd bring it up, just so that it's on camera, so people can hear that this is something that I've actually talked about, which is that we need another rink to solve the problem. And Deb, I think you had a good answer to that, so do you want to talk about that, that a new rink doesn't really solve the problem?
Thank you. Through the chair, I, I actually, I wouldn't say that it does or wouldn't solve the problem. I would add that if you look across Western Canada, and certainly to our neighboring city to the north, we have one more rink, one more sheet of ice than the city of Saskatoon does.
Yeah.
The city of Saskatoon has, you know, a larger population, certainly, and some of their rinks that I include in that count are actually privately owned. So they're not even all city-run facilities. So, I, I, I'm not convinced that another rink would necessarily solve the problem. And I think we have some things we need to work through, and we're certainly willing to do that work.
Okay. I think I'm sitting, same as Shannon. Sorry, buddy. It's not like they can't play hockey, though. They can. This is going to be kind of tough getting up the next day.
Through the chair, that's correct.
But next year, someone else has to take that time, unless it's them again. So, that's why I think if you want these prime times, you need more rinks. And if you need more rinks, we shouldn't be approving forty million dollars extra for a pool, when we could have used some of that to build a new rink for ten million.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. So what I heard today, and just throughout all this, is, the story is that we want to provide better conditions for folks to stay active, and perhaps, as what we've heard from administration, that work in the way that we, our policies and our schedule works might help make those changes. And to me, that's important, because not only to keep people moving, but to create those conditions that keep people connected to the communities they build when they're involved in those sports. I think that's really important. So, while I really, I fully support the spirit of making sure that these conditions are created, I'm really struggling to get, get to support, getting into the weeds of the operational things, assigning specific hours, mainly because I'm not an expert in that area, and I do trust Counselor Burton's pass and with involvement and expertise in this area, but I also have to trust administration when they say that this would be tough to do it right away, and I respect what they have brought forward. And I also hear that they're working in these policies and these changes. So, for me, as Counselor Flores said, I think things can be figured out, and I really hope that when these changes are being explored and all this consultation is happening, that we take serious what has been talked about today and the things that have been brought forward in terms of the issues that people are experiencing to stay active with sports. So, I think the spirit is there. I do support what Counselor Burton's trying to achieve. I just, I'm having troubles supporting something so prescriptive in terms of things that I am not an expert on or familiar enough, that I have to defer to administration and their recommendations. I do support points two and three. I'm just having a really tough time being so prescriptive in point one. So, as I think has been mentioned before, at the policy level, I think if we could get a way to find ourselves there, like, I would absolutely support this. I just, I can't be so prescriptive in that support. So, again, really, really support the spirit of making sure that we're creating conditions where adults are staying active and involved in movement in sports and in those communities, but the point A is just, I'm struggling with that. That's all for you.
Okay. Counselor Radins, go ahead.
Yes. Final word. Okay. So just for clarification, on point number one, you're saying that you're working on point number one, correct? That's in the works. Like, I've heard that a few times. You guys are working on better, getting a better schedule.
Through the chair, administration is working on reviewing the ice allocation policy.
Okay.
Number one is asking for that to be, like, asking for this allocation to occur starting December first. We will not, the work we're doing doesn't do that. The work we're doing sets up a policy that we would have in place for the twenty-six, twenty-seven season.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. And on point number three, is, there is already discounted rate. I think that you mentioned that earlier, correct?
The, there is a non-prime rate that already exists in the leisure fees bylaw. Administration has the power to determine what prime time is, and so we can change the definition of prime time so that it ends at ten P.M., and then the non-prime rate would account for any bookings after that time. That change would have an impact of revenue of about forty thousand dollars per year for the city, because the rate per hour would go from two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and ninety-three cents to a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay. So prime time currently is what time, sorry?
It currently goes from four-thirty to eleven-thirty, and if we changed it to ten P.M., it would have an impact on revenue of above forty thousand dollars a year because of that decreased rate.
That's forty thousand dollars less?
Yes.
Huh. Okay. Okay. So, these teams that are after ten o'clock or ten-fifteen, for these teams, these community teams, they're working, or they're playing until almost midnight, correct?
That's correct. The adult recreational bookings are for an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay. And so that's up until almost midnight, right? Okay. So, in terms of the motion that Counselor Burton has put forward, I do appreciate the effort, the passion, and, and your spirit in putting it forward, and thanks to Counselor Turnbull for also trying to add some direction and some clarity to that, though I do see that we've met some common ground as per Counselor Zakidniak's comments. And I think that, I'm going to be honest here, when this was proposed to me, I felt that this is fringing on operations, and I feel that we need to let staff do their work as they are intended to do in ops. We make policies and work governance, and so, I, sorry, you know, I state the obvious on a regular basis, so I'm just going to say that we need to hold to that, and so I am struggling with this as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I will go to Counselor Burton to close debate. Go ahead, Counsel Burton.
Thank you. Question for the administration. Are there any other arena sports that start at ten-fifteen P.M. or later?
Who would like to answer that? Go ahead.
No, there are not.
I understand there are adult versions of broom ball, synchroscate, ringette, so they would be starting earlier than ten-fifteen?
Yes.
I understand an option was developed by REAL a number of months ago in May to change ice allocation, and it met all the ice time commitments. Was that the case?
Who would like to answer that? Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, REAL did propose an option, and no, it did not meet our ice allocation requirements.
Okay. This has been a grim, this year has been a grim outlook for many hockey players. This motion would mean some rescheduling by some organizations, but as you've discovered, that is a normal part of sports, and I do wish to minimize that impact. The immediate need is to fix the existential problem right now. There's been complaints of inequity and unavailability for other groups, and this is the first step towards solving a bunch of these arena problems here. I am a person who understands the challenges and will spearhead additional changes. Prioritization does not mean to the exclusion of the second or third. A lower price does not help if the team's full because they can't play at such a late time. I think part of the problem lies in the word priority. Fair and equitable needs to be part of the equation. Equitable does not mean equal, just, fair, and right in consideration of the facts and circumstances. When I look at rinks around Regina, we have fourteen city rinks, and if we used my original motion, there would be thirteen rinks with one set aside. That's priority in my mind with that. And Regina's arena allocation policy is supposed to, quote, "allocate ice time in such a way as to promote and encourage participation in sports to the overall benefit of the community," close quote. That includes lifelong participation. This request does not solve all. It is a minimal request. Ten-fifteen ice times would still need to be booked by various teams. The ask here is for eleven hours a week out of seven-hundred-and-forty-two hour, available ice hours in a week. It gives as much lead time as possible, as it starts in December, three months from now. It's a small ask to help keep adult recreational hockey alive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Burton. So are we doing the vote on number one first? Okay. So the first vote will be on part one of the motion, up on the screen as displayed. So I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on item number one.
The motion on the, sorry, I'll start over again. The vote on point number one of the main motion is lost in a vote of eight to three. Those members voting in favor were Counselors Bezo, Burton, and Rassovich. Those voting against were Counselors Fro, Siklis, Manzanelli, Turnbull, Radins, Zakidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky.
Okay. Now we will vote on items number two and three. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on items two and three.
The motion, the main motion, item number two and three. I thought we were doing these one second. They were together? Okay. Okay. So the vote on items two and three of the main motion are carried in a vote of nine to two. Those members voting in favor were as follows. Counselor Fro, Siklis, Manzanelli, Turnbull, Burton, Zakidniak, Flores, Rassovich, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those voting against were Counselors Bezo and Radins.
Thank you. We will now consider item CR-25-103, Pupikis's Cree Nation Municipal Services and Compatibility Agreement, 1212, 1220, and 1250, Scarth Street, and I'll ask Counselor Turnbull to please introduce the report.
Okay. We will now look at CR-25-103, the, oh, gosh, Pupikis's Cree Nation Municipal Services and Compatibility Agreement, 1212, 1220, and 1250, Scarth Street. The recommendation is that city council approve the municipal services and compatibility agreement between the city of Regina and the Pupikis Cree Nation, and instruct the city solicitor to prepare and bring forward the necessary bylaw authorizing the execution of the municipal services and compatibility agreement.
Thank you, Counsel Turnbull. Can I have someone move the report? Counsel Manzanelli, and a seconder. Counsel Radins, thank you. Counsel Manzanelli, do you wish to speak to the report? Go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. I think this is a great news story. Love the investment from the nation into our city. Love the partnership behind it. The respect shown, and I hope it's a successful future.
Thank you. Any questions from council members on the report? Counsel Manzanelli, anything final to add?
I've talked enough.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
The motion is carried with all members present voting in favor. Counselor Fro temporarily stepped away from the meeting.
We will now consider the bylaw related to the previous item, and so it'll be CR-25-103 as well as the bylaw number 2025-53, the Annual Low Income Municipal Property Tax Deferral Program Bylaw, 2025, number two. And then also, I'll just read it out for the record, and CR-25-103, bylaw number 2025-54, Pupikis's Cree Nation Municipal Services Agreement Execution Bylaw. So we will read out those two bylaws. So I will ask Deputy Mayor Turnbull to do the first reading of the bylaw.
2025-53, Annual Low Income Municipal Property Tax Deferral Program Bylaw, and 2025-54, Pupikis Cree Nation Municipal Services Agreement Execution Bylaw. I move by, I move seconded by Counsel Flores that bylaw number 2025-53 and 54 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counsel Fro?
First reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turnbull, can you please... Deputy Mayor Turnbull, can you please do second reading of the bylaw?
I move seconded by Counselor Raddens that bylaws number 2025-53 and 54 be read a second time at this meeting.
Does any member of council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Second reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turnbull, can you please do consent for third reading of the bylaw?
I move seconded by Counselor Mantenelli that bylaws number 2025-53 and 54 be read a third time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Focus for five more minutes. Counselor Siklis, can I get your vote?
Through you, Mayor. The consent for third reading of both bylaws is carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turnbull, can you please do final reading of the bylaw?
I move seconded by Counselor Bezo that bylaw number 2025-53 and 54 be, I guess, go to the third reading? Final reading? Final reading.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Third and final reading of both of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, Counselor Siklis, can you please tell everyone why you are wearing the hat that you are?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mayor. No disrespect to the dress code that we have here, but today's a very special day in my ward in Harbor Landing. The residents and the kids at Harbor Landing Village are having their annual jamboree, of which all of you are invited to, and anyone listening can come as well. They're open till 8:00 p.m. tonight. There are seven bands playing. It's all for a great cause. There's actually a mechanical bull waiting for us when we get there. So the fun will continue in the next 30 minutes. See you there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Counselor Siklis, a seconder by Counselor Flores. Any opposed? And carried. Thank you, everybody.